Board member from Detroit, Michelle Fecto is next. She's board member, she's the board's NASBY delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. Next to me is Richard Zyley from Dearborn. He's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
We're going to kick off this morning. First of all, we want to welcome what I understand to be Spring Arbor University students from the Ed School and welcome today. How many of you took MEEP tests when you were in school in K-12? Yeah, well, that's what you'd be doing today if you were back there. And instead, we'll be quizzing you at lunchtime on what you learned this morning. So, we're developing a test. Just as an aside, you know, with, a lot of folks get mixed up on what actually happens on MEEP Day. There's math tests for kids from grades three through eight. There's reading tests for kids from grades three through eight. Writing is at grades four and seven. Science is five and eight. Social Studies and is at sixth and ninth grade. And just think about it this way, there's going to be about 800,000 kids over the next three weeks taking tests in this state. And we're very excited about the possibility of bringing on Smarter Balance down the road here, we hope, a year from this spring. And we'll see what happens in the Senate to get us to that point. I'll have some more comments later. I want to take just a moment, we're all very proud, Kathleen Strauss, who's been nominated as the Heritage Hall of Fame and has won that award, to recognize exceptional leaders from various ethnic backgrounds who've made outstanding contributions to the American way of life, who've demonstrated their commitment to multiculturalism, and who generously supported ethnic and cultural traditions. And I know your husband, Wally, I know your kids, Peter and Barb, are very proud of you, along with your grandkids, but we are too, Kath. And congratulations to you. Kathleen's going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame on November 12th. Congratulations, Kath. I also wanted, this is a time just to give some board shout-outs at times. Eileen Weiser and the whole MDE team recently, again and again and again, on Common Core just did an outstanding job at the Senate hearing last week, and it's, I think, going to get us over the goal line, and if not, we're going to go bananas. We're going to, we're not going to, we're going to take-
By parts, no, I want to say John wrote my speech.
Oh, well, John-
Which was, Eileen, do whatever you think will help.
And I know you think also, I mean, our team has been, this has been a labor, you know, from May till now. It's supposed to have been done by October 1. I've been asked to just cool my jets and keep, take a deep breath, and I think they had a sign up in the runkle room that says, "Keep calm and listen to Wendy." So, for now, I'm keeping calm, but they need to get this done. And I'm assuming that's going to happen very soon. The Milken Award, I just, we wanted to show a brief clip of the Milken Award from last week, and that'll speak for itself. I wasn't able to make this, so I asked someone you'll see in a moment to represent me at this.
Well, I have the great honor in offering you congratulations on Henry Ford II High School being named by Newsweek as one of the top thousand schools for the third year in a row.
People are watching, not only at Newsweek, we're watching you in California as well. At the Milken Foundation, we believe there are many outstanding educators in this country. But, one of the best teachers out of 3 million teachers is here, in your school. And before we leave, a teacher at Ford High School is going to receive this national award. The Milken Educator Award goes to Mark Julian!
Something like this, I'll probably spend the rest of my career trying to live up to.
Mark is just an extraordinary teacher. He loves his students, his students love him, and it is not unusual for me to get a phone call or a communication from parents sharing with me what impact he's had on the lives of students in his classroom.
Yeah, he looks surprised. That's a great January. But, thank you, Richard, for representing us there.
A real honor.
Appreciate it.
Does he have to donate that check immediately?
No, that's his. They give a separate donation to a school, it's not that high, and then they get some equipment, but no, that's his. And then he becomes part of the network, and it's quite a, quite an honor. Okay, our first item today, first item that we'll test the Spring Arbor folks on. We'll see their pre-knowledge now, and then we'll go, not really. This is the presentation on personal curriculum. And in this presentation, our folks are going to review a report regarding the implementation of the personal curriculum among our schools, our 4,000 or so schools around the state. This report addresses possible next steps to promote personal curriculum implementation in Michigan. I really think that promoting is the key. A lot of folks just don't understand the opportunities available to them through the personal curriculum, as hard as we've tried here. And I think that would take away a lot of the tension that's around the Michigan Merit Curriculum and some other issues. So, with that, relatively new Deputy Superintendent Vanessa Kiesler is going to kick this off.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to share this study with you in this venue. Just a bit of a reminder about it, and then I'm going to invite someone to the table with me. The Special Education Advisory Committee in November of 2012 recommended that we undertake a study of personal curriculum and its use in Michigan. So, this is that study, or the first part of that study. As, as many of you know, I think I'm a researcher at heart, and so what researchers love to do is do one study and then say, "Well, now there's nine other studies that we need to do." It's called building a research agenda, and we're very good at it. So, but in truth, digging into this question in a, in a way that's meaningful is going to require some additional work, but we did want to give you the results thus far. I'm also going to take a moment to use this to highlight some of our, you're going to hear about this a couple of times today. We've been working very hard here at the department on our strategic research and evaluation initiatives and building capacity to do studies like this within the department. And so, the way we did this study is we formed a partnership this summer, internship partnership with the University of Michigan, the Ford School of Public Policy, and we had four education data fellow interns join us. And one of those interns completed this study. So, we're, we're excited about the partnership. We also partner with different universities, MSU among them, and we have kind of a lineup of interns and research associates and fellows now to try to help us be more able to answer these sorts of questions, so we're excited about that.
And I just thought I'd mention, because he's too humble to bring this up himself, but our esteemed governor's education advisor, Craig Ruff, teaches in that very school, and I think he has a student with him today, as a matter of fact.
I happened to be shadowed today by Xavier Monroe, one of my students, and soon, another one of my students will be taking center stage, so.
Okay. I didn't mean to give you that big an opening.
So, nor, no further ado, I'd like to invite Melissa Helberg from the University of Michigan, Ford School of Public Policy, to the table. If you'd want to introduce yourself briefly, I didn't get all of your, she's also involved in other things at U of M, and then we can get right into the report.
Yeah, so, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. It's really an honor to be here to present my summer work to everyone. As Vanessa mentioned, my name is Melissa Helberg. I'm a dual-degree master's student at the University of Michigan, studying the School of, the Ford School of Public Policy, and also the School of Education. Prior to coming to grad school, I was a high school science teacher at a charter school in Detroit. And then after I graduate in December, I'm going to be a college counselor at a high school in Detroit. So, I'm really looking forward to that.
I think I've pretty much covered most of this, just a little bit more on personal curriculum. Personal curriculum is something named in our law as being part of the Michigan Merit Curriculum. And again, one of, I think one of the impetus is, impati? I guess I don't know about you. I've seen that word in multiple. For, for this study was, was concern from the C Act that, that we maybe weren't using the personal curriculum to the extent that it could be used. So, this is the report on implementation across the state and recommendations for next steps.
So, just a little bit about the personal curriculum. So, essentially, it's an option for students, so high school students, to alter the Michigan Merit Curriculum requirements. And so, there's a variety of ways that students can do that. So, there's various types of modifications through the personal curriculum. There's enrichment, where students can go beyond the Michigan Merit Curriculum requirements in key academic areas, core areas. They can modify the Algebra II requirements. Also, there are some options for transfer students who come from out of state and then kind of join us in their junior year or later, taking the Michigan Merit Curriculum, and then also for students with IEPs or special education students, there's some options for them. Essentially, the way the personal curriculum process works is some school personnel can request a personal curriculum for a student, the student's parent, or the student themselves, if they're 18 or older, can request a personal curriculum. Then there's what's called a PCT meeting, where the student, parent, a counselor, and then the subject area teacher that's relevant to the personal curriculum, they're going to have an in-person meeting to kind of discuss the needs of the student and what modifications might be necessary for that student in alignment with, if the student has an IEP, and then also the student's EDP, which is their educational development plan, or kind of where they see themselves going after high school into their career and such. So, after that meeting is complete, and they've kind of agreed upon an appropriate personal curriculum, they sign that agreement, they implement that personal curriculum in the student's high school experience. The parent and teachers kind of monitor that as it's going on, check in with one another quarterly, over email, in person, that's a little bit more flexible. And then the student, after all of those requirements are complete, receives a, just the regular high school diploma, as soon as they meet all those requirements. And so, my work this summer, I was aiming to answer these key questions. So, first, how many districts use this option, and for how many students? And who are these districts that are using the personal curriculum? What are the demographic characteristics of students that use the personal curriculum? So, kind of who are the students using this option? Are there some districts using the option more than others? And then in what ways do educators understand this option, and what are some of the challenges to implementing or beginning of personal curriculum? And the goals of the project, kind of in line with those questions, is to refine and expand the use of personal curriculum at high schools in Michigan, and also to promote and support its use through guidance from MDE, and also further feedback from the field, getting some kind of firsthand perspectives on how it works. So, the big picture of the way that I approached this project, I looked at it as kind of happening in three major components. First was interpreting the data that currently existed. So, high schools are required to report personal curriculum data to the state, so I was going to kind of take a look at that and analyze what we could figure out from the current information. Next, the next step was to analyze district policy, and the way that we did that was through a survey that we sent to high school principals, who then funneled the survey to whoever in their school was, you know, the most knowledgeable about the personal curriculum option, to gain some further insight into, you know, their understandings and how, you know, the personal curriculum is used at their school. And then the next step, which is kind of underway, not fully complete, which is why there isn't a check mark under it, is the focus groups. So, more of a qualitative approach to figure out what's happening in these districts and schools, and what can we do to better, you know, facilitate the PC process. So, all students who, you know, maybe are in need of a PC have access to that. So, in the data, the reported data from schools and districts, what we found, most schools that use the personal curriculum are suburban, although the school size varies widely. So, we didn't really see a common trend in terms of school size. African-American, Hispanic, and multiracial students were underrepresented amongst students who are using the PC. In terms of accountability status, priority and reward schools were underrepresented, but focus schools are the schools that have, you know, the largest achievement gaps in the state. Those were overrepresented among schools who use the personal curriculum. The enrichment modification, which is where a student can waive other requirements in order to take additional core subject credits, that was actually the most common type, where they're waiving out of the phys ed or the health requirement to take those additional courses. And then the second was of math modification, so modifications to that, like I said before, that Algebra II requirement. And then, on average, the percent of special education personal curriculums of students with an IEP, and what I will later define, high-use schools, 16%, and then in low-use schools, 46%. So, definitely a difference between those two types. To get a look at the numbers, so overall in Michigan, and this is 2011, 2012 data, the most current data that we had at the time, just over 4,000 students in Michigan use a personal curriculum. And again, this is restricted to high school students, because that's where the Michigan Merit Curriculum is in place. 161 high schools, 120 districts, and 42 ISDs in this state. So, for purposes of this project, I kind of defined different groups of schools that use the personal curriculum. The first is high use, and these are schools where 2.36% of their students or more use a personal curriculum. Low use is less than 2.36% of students use a personal curriculum, but they report at least one during that school year, and then no use is going to be schools that report zero personal curricula. The 2.36%, that comes from if we take the total number of students in the state using a personal curriculum and divide that by the total number of students who attend a school where at least one personal curriculum is documented, we get 2.36%. So, what we're saying is 2.36% of the students who attend schools that, you know, have a process clearly in place where a personal curriculum is possible, actually use the option. If we do a comparison between high-use schools and low-use schools, we can see in a number of dimensions, they are relatively similar. So, like we said, average number of students, not exactly the same, but pretty similar, pretty large schools, I would say. If we take a look at the modal modification, which is the second from the bottom, we can see that in high-use schools, the health/physical education is the most common, and then the mathematics, where at low use, that relationship is reversed. So, first, it's mathematics, then the health/physical education, something I mentioned before, the very last row, the percent IEP personal curriculum type. In high-use schools, only 16% of personal curricula are implemented for students with IEPs, whereas at low-use schools, we see that it's 46%. So, almost half of the PCs are for students with IEPs. This is kind of a geographic representation of where the personal curriculum-using schools are located. You can see the graph does distinguish, so in red, the high-use schools, again, 2.36% or more of their students use a personal curriculum, and then in black is our low-use schools, so under 2.36%, but they report at least one. And so, you can see, there's definitely some, I guess, congestion in the more populated areas, which is what we would expect anyway. The next slide is the same type of information, but at the district level. So, again, orange is high use, gray is low use, with the same definition, the 2.36% being the cutoff for that. And then the second tier of the research study, like I mentioned, was sending out the survey to the high school principals, and I worked with the Office of Educational Innovation and Improvement, I think I'm saying that correctly. I worked with them to develop this survey, so we made sure that we got, we were getting the information that we really needed to know. So, some of the key findings, first of all, if we look at survey response rate, granted, it was during the summer, when a lot of administrative staff and such will be potentially on vacation. But, something that we found interesting was that the high-use schools actually had the highest response rate, with no-use schools having the lowest response rate, potentially indicating their school's engagement with the personal curriculum option. Many of the schools across all school types cited that a challenge was misconceptions and lack of understanding of how the option could be handled at the school level. Across all school types, many schools report that they are unaware of the software ACT Point, which is kind of like just a computer program that allows them to input information and kind of guide them through creating a personal curriculum that actually the state provides, and then the districts pay for, a small nominal fee, but they pay for that. And something else that was very interesting was that although no-use schools report zero personal curricula to the state, only 6% of them on the survey told us that they don't ever get personal curriculum requests, with over a quarter of them citing that they get 10 or more PC requests per year, which indicates that there's either one of two things happening, either there's a reporting issue, or at those schools, all of the personal curricula that are requested are denied. So, one of two things happening. And then also, something that was interesting, that at high and low-use schools, so schools that use this option, a counselor is the person in charge of, you know, facilitating this process, whereas at the no-use schools, most of the time, they, they told us that the principal is the one that's in charge of that process, which could be meaningful. So, four key recommendations that arose from the study. First is that we want to gather more information about schools and districts, their perspective, their experience with this option. Second is to look at different types of training opportunities to make, you know, all these misconceptions and lacks of understanding go away, or kind of provide additional resources to help schools really understand how the option can be used. Three, because parents and guardians can recommend or suggest a personal curriculum, we thought it might be interesting to look at their awareness. So, if parents and guardians aren't aware of the option, not very likely that they're going to go to the school and request one for their student. And then fourth, many of the schools in the survey requested that we provide some type of example scenario, particularly for students with IEPs, to kind of see, you know, what would an example personal curriculum look like for a student in that scenario. So, OEII is in the process of starting the focus groups, which again will be, you know, small groups of school staff from the different school types, high-use, no-use, and low-use, just to kind of talk about their experience with the personal curriculum, kind of more, like I said before, a qualitative approach to this information. So, the timeline for now, it sounds like they're going to start doing, start conducting these focus groups in December, and that should last, I think, until the following, the following year. So, just meeting in what we're going to call like a neutral location, so, you know, school staff don't feel pressured to answer in a particular way if they're, you know, maybe their supervisor is present. And again, just to get a really, you know, on-the-ground understanding of what's happening and what, in what ways, you know, at MDE, we can support schools in making this option available to students who need it. So, in conclusion, the modal personal curriculum type is for enhancement or enrichment. IEP students between high-use and low-use schools, there's definitely a difference in terms of the percent that they make up. Additional guidance for schools seems to be something that they are really thirsty to have to provide this option. Reporting is potentially an issue because of that, that statistic I talked about earlier with the high-use schools. And then also, we have some demographic groups that are underrepresented amongst those students that, that currently use the option.
And before we kind of take questions, I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of things. One is that, you know, it's interesting, the C Act, the Special Education Advisory Committee, asked for this study, but when we looked into the study, the personal curriculum is being used actually, like Melissa explained, for enhancement or enrichment more often than modification to the personal curriculum for students with disabilities. One piece of this is not all students with disabilities really actually are eligible for a personal curriculum. It's not uniform that everybody who is labeled a student, or who is tagged as a student with disability should have a personal curriculum. So, just wanted to make that plain. I think there's a sense, there can be a conflation of personal curriculum is only for students with IEPs, or for all students with IEPs, and it's, it's really not necessarily. In fact, many, the goal of many IEPs is to help students access the Michigan Merit Curriculum with appropriate accommodations. So, just to kind of call that out a little bit. And then I just wanted to recognize Greg Dion is the supervisor of the Curriculum Instruction Unit, is sitting over here and worked closely with Melissa on the study, and Rochelle Bowerman from OEII did as well. And then thanks to Tammy Triplet, who provided all the logistical support for Melissa to be able to do this study. So, well, that will conclude, and take questions.
Well, let me, let me, so first of all, I want to, just before the question, say what this means to us and what we're going to try to do for the board and the department, and frankly, the whole enterprise more, is try to get past impressions people have and have it supported by reality, and then continue to work on it. We don't have all the answers from this. But, I, I mean, I'm guilty of, I have a certain set of, I think psychiatrists or psychologists, rather, would say, most of us have a set of biases that we end up filtering a lot of our work through. We look for things that are going to support our views. So, our intent is to try to really understand what's going on and then make it better. And with that spirit, we really appreciate, Melissa, your work on this and everyone else. But, we're going to bring more of this stuff to the board and try to, when I was a youngster in this business, as a new superintendent 20-some years ago, there was a very rich and, and well-resourced research division here at the department, as Kathy knows, and some others. And over time, that's gone away with the cuts, but we're going to, we're reinvigorating that, as you can see, and we're certainly using folks like Melissa and their talents to try to get us to this point. But, I mean, the real, the real sense, we're almost becoming a speaking point culture. I mean, I'm a, I'm a junkie on watching Sunday morning shows, and it's amazing how most, how almost verbatim you will see Republican speaking points and Democrat speaking points, almost verbatim from show to show with different people. And then I think we absorb it. I mean, that's just an extreme example, but I think what we're trying to do here is say, what is the reality of what's happening with our 2 million kids and not kind of what we think is happening? And this is, this is a very good example that we're going to try to improve. With that, questions and comments from board members. Richard, please.
This, this is the sort of thing that would seem to be to make a nifty afternoon professional development seminar. Are you aware, is anyone aware of any one who's offered this, or maybe ISDs have offered it, or, I'm just wondering how, how the, the training or the introduction such as we've received gets, gets out among the districts?
I will let Melissa or Greg answer that, and I have, I have a comment too, but I'll defer to them.
So, MDE actually does provide webinars to schools where they can kind of, you know, log in and learn more about it. Also, in the survey, we did find that a lot of schools cited that either their district or their ISD did provide some type of professional development. We didn't get, unfortunately, a lot of detail on what that entailed, but that would definitely be something that we could further explore in the focus groups to see, you know, what type of training have, you know, have educators been getting thus far, and in what ways we can kind of tweak that or provide additional resources to make sure, you know, any, any gaps in understanding are closed.
And the, the kind of, Melissa said the third phase of the research study was the focus groups, but, you know, as the, on the operational side, the fourth phase of this is, is changing our work to reflect it. So, it's very helpful to know that there are webinars and that there are ISD, but it helps us narrow in on what we don't know or what we're not doing, so we can be more strategic about what we add, add to the mix versus, oh, we just need another webinar, when really, we don't need another webinar, we need targeted training, like you're suggesting or whatnot. And I think that's the, what Greg is undertaking with his team now is the what-now after this report, which is the interface we want to have between the strategic research and then the program offices, is we get some data to diagnose, and then the program offices have more of a roadmap to move forward on.
May I follow up? I know that often, it's things like constructing a, a report form, or having outlines to, to guide a meeting to construct a, a personal curriculum, the, the lack of such paper forms, which are really mental constructions, though it's not just paper, it's, it's really, someone's got to think through, and, and it's a big help if forms like that are provided, that, that can guide a committee or, or a school through. Are, are any model forms easily available, or that sort of thing?
So, it's kind of left up to, I guess, like the district's discretion at this point. They are required by law to have some type of procedure in place, but it isn't to the forum where we have a particular document that they have to fill out. But, that would kind of be in line of some of the requests in the survey of, you know, providing some type of sample, so maybe like a more standardized form could potentially be a part of that.
This has been a-
We do have, ACT Point does have that available, and it's actually a really nice webinar. So, we do have that available? I mean, those are certainly customizable also.
You know, this is an example, I think, where a lot of what our, our so-called MMC problems are really not, if districts were thinking this through more. But, I, you know, one thing we could always use help on, and especially from board with your contacts and the way you see the world marginally different than we would, is how we get to saturation on things. And we talked about Wanted Leadership Team yesterday, where it's kind of what we call the, or someone termed, I thought appropriately, the escape, the escape hatches, which are, if you have time to individually facilitate in local schools for people to understand, for example, that there really is a problem of X proportion, then everyone's up to dealing with it. But, it's getting past kind of the idea. Well, so yesterday, the question is, well, how do we get this to the people who don't want to hear it? You know, it's the people, so in the same vein, I think it, we're open to thinking out loud even here or at another time, and how do we get to those that really either just don't understand the PC, or in some ways resist it? And in fairness, the first year, I think there was a little bit of a balance between, there was some fear that is this going to be used as an escape hatch? And it really, you know, I mean, there's some data that's a little bit troubling, frankly, but in general, I mean, it hasn't certainly done what some of us feared that first year. It's inappropriate, it seems to be used largely appropriately. But, to have so many with zero use, that seems odd. Eileen, please, and then Dan, please.
I want to thank you for this study. I know how much effort it-
I want to thank you for this study. I know how much effort it took, and the data is very revealing. But as always, I have more questions about more potential data. So one of the concerns that we've heard about the Michigan Merit Curriculum in our discussions is that it's not a vehicle that many rural schools are using. And your research for low use schools indicate, and high end, indicates that with the exception of several schools in the Upper Peninsula, that tends to be true, that they're clustered in suburban areas. I would like to see a list of no use and low use schools, and I would like the department to target legislators for those areas and partner with them to get this information out specifically to the people who are hearing from their superintendents or their principals, who in many cases are the gatekeepers for this program.
That's a good idea.
That it's not usable, that it's not workable. I think that if we could find a way to convey this information meaningfully through the existing elective structure that we have, not just the department, that it would help legislators understand that where schools in K-8 are not performing well on MEEP, that the pressures to use this for remedial purposes as opposed to expansion, expansion of the curriculum, going ahead, moving forward, that having to fix it on the high school level is something that could be dealt with in K-8 more successfully. And I think that to start that conversation, we're not doing, we're not being effective at, at having them hear us in a way that's really moving their high school students along. So fixing the pipeline right now is, is a really important activity to try.
That's a great idea. Thank you. We'll do that. I see Wendy nodding. I wouldn't say that if I didn't see her also nodding. Not nodding off, just nodding. Nodding off comes later. Dan, please.
Thank you as well for this. Two quick questions. One is, so on the recommendation slide, 16, just would love to hear a little bit more about three and four. I guess about number four first. Did I say two questions? This is all one question. This is all going to be one question, about three and four. The sample scenario, so I hear Dr. Zali, in essence, so, and don't let me put words in your mouth, this is not what you mean, but I'm a big fan of checklists. And so I hear Dr. Zali talking about kind of these forms and so on, and I think a checklist for schools and administrators so that they kind of, and I don't know if that's where you were headed, or if you're thinking about other kinds of sample forms, but I guess the question here is, sample, so I'm just not clear on what sample scenarios means here, and if you could expound on that a little bit. And part B then of the single question is, on number three, the examined parent guardian awareness and further develop systems to share existing and new resources, what, so what are the systems, I guess this, this builds off of Eileen's question, what are the existing systems to share and build awareness?
So the first part of your question, part A, so the sample scenarios was something that we heard through the survey from school staff. And it, what they described it as is MDE providing, let's say, maybe a scenario of, you know, an example, IEP of a student and their corresponding EDP, and then saying, this is a way that you could use the personal curriculum for this particular student, and this is how it would look. These are the courses maybe that would be waived or altered, and then this is, you know, the, the course track that they would take as a result of that. So kind of like a, almost like a, not really so much a checklist of this is how you would use it, but more of like a, here's an example of one hypothetical student and what we did for that student. So something like that, kind of like a, like a model PC for them to get ideas from. And then the second part of your question in terms of the existing resources, so the Michigan Department of Education provides a variety of, I guess, reports for parents to read and kind of learn more about how the PC might be used for their particular student. There's also the webinars that we spoke about, and there's also, I guess, kind of like a social network almost called Ning for educators, and I think parents can also gain access to that, basically where it's kind of like a communication venue about the personal curriculum, where they can learn about what's happening in other areas, different options of how the PC can be used. So it's kind of, I guess, more of an effort to get parents on board to those things. So those things are available to parents, but they're kind of, at least in my opinion, almost geared more towards educators in some way, but getting, bringing parents and guardians more into the conversation and into our consideration when we are creating new resources.
So maybe just a quick suggestion, follow-up. Just periodically, I feel like we have the conversation about engaging parents in the work and, in the work, I hate vague pronouns like that, woodwork. I think periodically, we talk about departmental engagement with parents, and whether it's a, the top to bottom list, and how do we share that information with parents, or something like this. I wonder, I just, sorry, I don't have, I don't have an answer or a solution to propose, but I'm just struck by the fact that the department's primary kind of vehicles through which to communicate are primarily vehicles designed to communicate with the school stakeholders, the administrators and so on, and not with parents so much. And I just, I don't know if there's a, just a separate, not infrastructure so to speak, but, you know, I mean, some deliberate thought and attention perhaps needs to be given to, hey, look, if, to the extent that we need to communicate with parents about a variety of things, there needs to be a separate infrastructure designed for doing so. We need to have partnerships with, you know, these kinds of organizations who actually talk to parents, or, I don't know, I don't know what it is. I mean, we can certainly ask our schools to do so, but to the extent that this is a consistent challenge, I just wonder if there are other mechanisms that make more sense.
And we struggle with that. I mean, I think you're making an excellent point, and we've partnered with Sandra and some others in terms of the PTA, but it's, it's a constant challenge. Because, well, you're hitting a nail on the head. We don't have a quick answer to that. We have a quick answer, a lot of folks don't like to hear, but it's a resource issue. You know, you're fine with that, but legislative and others, we, we should have enough to be able to make that happen. Because here, we've established this tremendous supposedly choice world for, you know, that works just perfectly, and then we don't give people any kind of vehicle to really understand, you know. There is an exception in Detroit where there is a vehicle that I understand exists that helps parents make decisions like that, but it's really not universal, and we'll, we'll have to still think more about that. I open ideas, I think it was Rochelle, and then Kathleen.
I'm, I'm really glad that, that this study's here and that you've presented. I've been getting calls from people in the special ed community, and I think that's sort of a vehicle for them to get information through the, sort of the groups that they belong to, various groups, autism society, or ARC, or whatever it be. And so they seem to maybe be more aware of it than other folks. But we've also, Kathy and I have gone to a number of schools, and we also, on the other end, have been hearing that they don't use it because it's perceived as being a very complicated and burdensome process. And, but it's, you know, so getting at the reasons why, I think it's, is very interesting. I've also heard anecdotal, and I'd like to throw it at you to see what, what your thoughts are, that there are some districts that are doing it really well, and they have resources and people that can really do that. It might be a good resource for the department to use to see if they would go and train other school, because I think people are looking for nuts and bolts, sort of how to, how to do this, very practical stuff. But, and, so, what is your feeling? Are there, is, is it more uniform, or are, are, the impression I got from talking to people was that there's just vast pockets of nobody using it, and then a few schools where people, or districts where people are really aware and using it? Is that your impression, or is it something different?
So I definitely think that that is an accurate representation of kind of what's going on, because you definitely have schools, you know, they're reporting over 200 personal curricula in a given year.
Right.
And then other pockets, like you mentioned, where there's zero for multiple years in a row. And I think it really does come down to sometimes, you know, the understanding of how the option works and what it can be used to do, but also, you know, just the resources that you were talking about. So, for example, the meeting, as of now, by law, has to be done in person. So that requires, you know, parents or guardians, maybe particular areas that's a little more difficult to get out of work, come to the school, counselors have to be present, teachers have to be present. So there is, you know, there are quite a few resources and other considerations that go into it beyond just, do we understand that we have to do this meeting and what we have to do during the meeting?
And I would also like, when you do the, and I'm sure it'll come up, and I'm sure it's on the agenda, when you get to why, I'm looking at the under-resourced schools where they don't have counselors, and the principal is just stretched so thin. And how do you, you know, how do you overcome that? I mean, because I think it's what you're saying, it's, it's, it's one of these resource issues, if you don't have the funding to have the, the counselors and social workers or whatever to make it happen. And principal may just not have the time to, or inclination to do it. And I don't know how you can find a solution around that. I'm not, besides giving them enough money to hire counselors. So I'd be curious to see and to have questions around exactly why and how resources may or may not contribute to that.
I think, you know, I think we're all in the situation in a lot of ways in education now, where we have to do more with less, and we have to be more systematic. We have to build systems and processes and procedures. We can't reinvent every time. And so I think that's where the department is trying to build our leverage, is if we can help them even more, cut through the confusion, have the sample scenarios, know to use ACT Point, build the system so it's not so labor intensive, then maybe it's, you know,
Yeah, more doable.
We have to, that's where we're seeing our leverage right now.
Yeah.
Is to make it more streamlined, and then maybe it will be, the, the threshold to use it will be lower for people.
Right.
Because if they're gonna, if they're thinking, I have to invent a process, and I have to dig around and find it, that's harder for a, a busy principal than someone who's really clear on ACT Point has it, and this is the process, and here's a sample thing. So that's where we're trying to leverage right now.
Kathleen, please. And John, please. Richard. Kathleen, please.
Oh, thank you. Rochelle raised some of the questions I was going to raise, but I thought this was fascinating, because first of all, it's being used so little. We knew, a lot of people didn't understand it, but that's, that's the case evidently. And what Rochelle talked about, the lack of counselors, obviously has a big impact. So that's another problem. So I'm glad you're going to be a counselor. You can probably do a great job. But it makes me wonder, should we be looking at, is this really a workable arrangement? Is this what we want to do? Or should we be looking at ways of modifying the legislation? Is that what we, is, is this really fixable so that it would be used more? We thought it was going to be used by special ed kids a lot, as families, and it isn't apparently. Now, is that because of lack of understanding, a lack of awareness, or is it because they're content? I mean, we don't, I don't know if that, if you're going to get an answer to that question. But I, I wonder if we should be, if the basic question is, is this working out the way we had hoped it would, or should we be looking at some ways of modifying it? And if so, how? For instance, all these people have to be in the room together. Is that actually necessary, or could this be implemented in a more workable way?
That's a good line of thought. Does something come to mind that might infer a change that, while we're thinking about it, and then maybe the legislative committee and others could, we could work through with them?
I don't, I don't know if this really gets to what Kathy's talking about, but one of the concerns that I have looking at this is the number of schools that report that they get 10 or more requests, and yet are still zero schools. So it's almost like they're just saying no off the board. So one, one thing that I would suggest is maybe that parents have a little more leverage in the process, because it doesn't seem for these schools that they have any.
That's a good, good point. If it's on this same line of reasoning for a minute, Gary, but otherwise, we're going to go to John with the new questions. On the same line of reasoning though, the same?
Well, I was just going to say that, to kind of think about it, maybe I'm not understanding the full picture. If, if I got 10 requests at my school for a student to take my physics class for a math credit, and then we ended up having no students go through with that, it might not be because they were denied, but it could be because in talking with them more deeply, we learned that the best thing for their learning would be for them to take another math class and physics. And so I guess I would, I would caution that we, we don't have enough to really confirm what might be the, the behind all of that. But it is an interesting point. I agree absolutely with what you said, that having zero reporting schools.
The same line?
We have political advocacy by principals saying that it's unusable.
Oh, interesting.
So that, that would be where we would want to reach out to both school administrators and school personnel and parents to educate them on not just the remedial aspects, but on the going above and beyond.
Right.
You know, you're right, it could be either one. But if the, if the graduation requirements are stated specifically, and the student can't meet them the way that the school is structured, there should be something, some give here without forcing a student to drop out, or without having children, in some cases, what we've seen is dual enrollment in community colleges, or even going, trying to do it through a, a post-secondary four-year institution. So we, we just want to get there. And we have this mechanism. The question is how, why is it not being used, and how can we approach education on that to try and move on?
I completely agree. And I'd be happy to, to offer to work with anyone on creating some school-centered solutions and community-centered solutions that might be helpful to, to inform people about what the facts are and how it might be workable.
We're going to take you up on that. That's a good idea, really with maybe some other network folks. I think it was John, and Richard, and Dan.
Just bringing this forward today, and thank you all very much, helps push that discussion along about how do we help those places and people who aren't applying this when appropriate to, there is flexibility built into the Michigan Merit, including this opportunity for unique circumstances to design a personal curriculum. I, I shared Eileen's concern, and I think yours, Mike, early on, that we would be creating a vehicle or an avenue where people could find an excuse not to figure out how to deliver the Michigan Merit content, which, you know, is a good platform that all kids do need. It sounds like we're not seeing that out, being exploited too much, but we definitely need to work through this issue of, for those who want to change the Michigan Merit requirements, there is a simpler fix, which is to just take full advantage of the unique circumstances for young people who need a modification that is already built in. And we've got to figure out how to advance that understanding and practice. So I appreciate Gary and everybody's push on this.
Thank you, John. Richard, and then Dan.
I just want to caution against how we approach this issue. There are, I mean, it's there because it's supposed to benefit students, and so the real challenge is identifying students who would benefit from this option. So it's not a matter of promoting parental choice. It's not a matter of seeing that every school has at least one. I mean, that, it's a, it's a matter of connecting this program, helping administrators who want to serve their students, identify the students who would benefit from, from this. So I think that's how we must approach it, rather than an institutional approach that says, you're not doing this for anybody, and why not, you know. It's not a matter of promoting this tool, it's a matter of identifying the need for which this tool was designed to serve. So we need to approach in that way. It's like, I love Shaw's play, The Doctor's Dilemma, and there's a character in there who pioneered on gallbladder surgery. And so anyone that had any ailment, he'd take out his gallbladder. And obviously, the, the, a lot of people do need to have their gallbladders removed, but you got to make the right connection.
Very unique way, and we're always interesting. Dan, and then Eileen.
Indeed. Yeah, and just to be clear, so I was not suggesting that the word get out in order to promote parental choice so much as, so my assumption is, and I correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't know, but I'm assuming that the, the PC process is usually initiated by student or family's parent request. It's not an administrator who says, you know, young lady or young man, like you are, and if that's in fact the case, that would be interesting to know. Like, so how does this, how does this process typically begin? Who initiates it? And if in fact, it is typically initiated by parents or students, then I think there is an issue around, which is what I'm assuming, then I think there is an issue around making sure that we get the information out to parents and students. I'm wondering, so the other quick question here is around desegregation of data. The, so I'm struck by the fact that students of color are generally underrepresented among students with personal curriculum. I'm wondering if that is true across both of the high use, highest use categories? In other words, are they In other words, are they both underrepresented among special ed students and among the enhancement group? Or are they overrepresented in one, underrepresented in another? Or over, you know, like what, what's the breakdown individually in those groups?
What's that?
And I'm just, I don't know if you know that, and if not, just as part of the continuing research, would encourage you to find out.
Right, so the data that I presented here today was overall, so it was not broken down by high use, so that would definitely be an interesting conclusion.
Well, not even by high use, low use school. I'm, I'm curious about, and what's intuitively just feels like would might provide better information for future policy decisions is somewhere in the presentation, you indicated that the two most common types of modifications are for special ed students and Ian, no, 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 it was the enhancement and the math modification, right?
Would you be interested in by, maybe by racial breakdown, how, by type of enhancement, are these racial demographic groups overrepresented, underrepresented in different types of modifications?
Yeah, I would just, as you dig into it, I'd encourage you to disaggregate the data by race and by geography, frankly, the rule versus urban suburban. I think that might be illuminating.
Good idea. Thank you, Dan. Kathleen, please.
And another data point that could be useful, maybe not, but is dropouts. If districts aren't using the personal curriculum, if there's no relief for a child who didn't learn well in K eight, how do you link whether that student dropped out because they didn't have any mitigating course in their high school life?
You all have just made Vanessa's day because she's looking for an excuse to keep going with this in the best sense.
I can come up with more. It's looking at Dan.
Really, we would like follow-up. Seriously, if you have more when you're thinking about it, John, so no, because we will do follow-up. Kathleen, please.
I just want to say, I think it's great that you're doing more research and studies here. Because I, I remember when the department had an outstanding research section.
Full-time people, a whole.
Wonderful, it did great work and it just disappeared.
Yeah.
And it's great that it's, that you're getting it back. And if you're working with the universities, I think it's really very positive development.
We really appreciate our, our university partners and it's, it's a very exciting initiative. So we look forward to bringing more support.
It's a smart move. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. This is very helpful. It's encouraging to us to see the support for this and we'll, we'll find ways to continue on this vein, but also on some others that you'll see in the future that we're trying to understand better ourselves. And just to Kathy's point again, when I was in the field, I mentioned earlier, but, you know, it's hard to overcome in the field, the necessary compliance that we have to do, where we're usually the bad guys. And one of the things that I remember feeling really good about the department was exactly that. You know, it's like, well, the department, they're always on us about this and always on us, and now we're that, and now we're that, never good enough for them. But by the way, they do have this great research department. It's, it's helpful to try to balance the bad things that through a compliance-oriented, especially our federal money and all that, it's, it's hard to overcome it without the feelings that, you know, we're not really there to help. So thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it, Vanessa. And I think you're staying here. And Joseph's joining. And this came up, and Dan, among others, nodded quickly about this would be a great idea to follow up last month's meeting with, the department staff would identify key assessment and demographic data, as well as infrastructure information about Michigan's priority schools kind of in its totality. And the presentation's going to cover issues that these schools face and must overcome in order to improve student achievement. While they're gearing that up, I, we hope this will be in the same vein as the last item, interesting and, and further some discussion.
So as, as Mike said, this is kind of a follow-up on, on information about priority schools that were, that was requested. So a little bit of background, priority schools have existed for four years. They do experience challenges in student achievement, in achievement gaps, in the growth in graduation rates. In fact, that's, if they have challenges in all four of those things, that's kind of how they get identified. We also know that they do have challenges with building in district leadership, effective classroom instruction, building a culture and climate geared towards student success and school governance. So we do have kind of, in, in these places, in, in some ways, a perfect storm. The department team that supported the, that support these schools does involve five offices, so this really is a clearly cross-office and cross-division effort. So we have evaluation, strategic research, and accountability providing support. We have the school reform office providing support, education improvement and innovation, field services, and then other offices come in and out as the needs arise. So in addition, SEPI is instrumental in this effort. We don't want to forget our partners in DTMB, who provide a lot of the data. Methodology, we do have, I think everyone has a reasonable understanding of where top to bottom comes from. We do have student achievement levels that go into the top to bottom, so just how, how well are students achieving? We also have individual student progress where we are able to measure that, or school-wide improvement where we're not able to measure individual student progress because of lack of testing from in adjacent grades. We also have the size of the within-school achievement gap that goes into the top to bottom ranking, as does graduation rate and improvement in graduation rates. And just as, as a bit of a reminder, we use those because, one, we're required to create this school-wide ranking, but if we're required to create a school-wide ranking, what do we think are important indicators of whether or not schools are doing what we like them to do? And that is having reasonably good levels of achievement, making sure that improvement is happening, making sure that achievement gaps are not large, and making sure that students are graduating. Kind of a composite of, of the goals that we would have for schools. So there is a difference between identification and intervention in priority schools. Identification happens by being on the bottom 5% of the top-to-bottom list, or by having a graduation rate less than 60% for three years running. Identification does happen every year. We identify a, we identify a list of priority schools every year. Intervention occurs immediately after identification and goes on for at least four years. So schools still have to, have to implement the priority school interventions, even if they're not re-identified in subsequent years, at least for four years. So we wanted to look a little bit at the achievement data, the kinds of data that, that result in schools becoming priority schools. So if you look at this chart, you can see on the X-axis, the horizontal axis, that we're looking at school-wide achievement, and these are in the Z scores that we use in, in the top-to-bottom list. So zero is the state average, and below that indicates the number of standard deviations as, as a school is below the state average. Above, it's the number of standard deviations, a school is above the average, and so on. On the Y-axis or vertical axis, we have the improvement rates. And again, zero is at the state average. Negatives are below the state average and positives are above the state average. So.
And we want you to see what cartoon figure you actually see if you look closely at that.
It's a Rorschach test. So here are the state averages. These are the high, the priority high schools. So we chose only high school data. Things are very similar in elementary school data, but these are the priority schools for high schools. And what you can see is that in general, priority schools have achievement that is lower than the state average and improvement rates that are lower than the state average. Notice that it's not all the schools that are in that area that are priority schools. That is because we combine across math and reading and science and writing and social studies. But in general, what we see is that priority schools are low on all of those. So you might see a, a few schools that are above the state average in terms of improvement, but that's because they're also very low on the other metrics that they might have this happen in reading. So if you look at just a, kind of an exemplar priority school, this school, we can also identify schools from the beating-the-odds analysis that we do that are in their cohort of 30 similar, most similar demographic schools in the state. So you can see that there, this is not about the population that the schools serve. We have schools serving very similar populations across the state to this particular priority school. And you can see that those schools are scattered throughout this, this range. So if we look at this particular priority school, we can see that this school, this high school has 20% of its students are proficient in reading, meaning that we have 21 proficient and 84 not proficient in reading. And we actually have in this school a 4.8% annual decline in proficiency rates. So this is how this school became a priority school, both low achievement and actually declining significantly in achievement over time. So wanted to look at kind of a mid-level, beating-the-odds cohort comparison school. In this mid-level comparison school, we have 35% proficient in reading, meaning 88% proficient, 158 not proficient. And we actually see right at the state average, the state average is a 1.5% annual increase in proficiency, so they're right at the state average. Then if we look at, I'm sorry, then if we look at kind of a high-level beating-the-odd school for this, or a high-level comparison school for this particular priority school, we see a 55% proficiency rate in reading, meaning 64 proficient, 52 not proficient, and a 6.5% annual increase in proficiency. And again, just to keep in mind, these are schools serving very similar populations. It's not about the population the schools are serving. So this one also looks at, now, we've got the same thing on the X-axis, we're looking at the Y-axis being different. The Y-axis is now the achievement gap. So right here, again, the zero is the average. This is the average achievement gap between the top 30 and bottom 30 in this, in each school. And those that are negative have larger achievement gaps than the rest of the state. Those that are positive have smaller achievement gaps than the rest of the state. So again, here are the priority schools from among all the high schools in the state. And one of the things that you will notice is that priority schools, even though it's hard to have a large achievement gap if you're very, very low achieving, priority schools do tend to have the largest achievement gaps that they can have. So it's kind of, in priority schools, we've got this low achievement, low improvement rate, and large achievement gaps, kind of all combining together across all subjects, creating the, the kind of challenges that the priority schools have to deal with in being able to improve over time. So again, this is exactly the same priority school as before. In this one, we have a 20% proficiency rate, and we have an achievement gap that is a little less than two standard deviations, smaller than the state average. But again, it's near the largest that you actually can get with very, very low achievement. Again, the same mid-level comparison school, a 35% proficiency rate and achievement gap is a little larger than the state average. And in the same high-level comparison school as before, we do have a 55% proficiency rate and achievement gap that's a little more than one standard deviation, larger than the state average. So again, not necessarily demographics. We can also look at high school graduation. And again, just wanted to indicate that we see very similar patterns regardless of whether it's reading, math, science, social studies, elementary school versus high school. And then if we look at high school graduation, again, here are the priority schools, again, almost universally below the state average. But one thing that you will notice is that there are some schools that don't, that aren't necessarily below that state average, and that is because graduation rate actually only comprises 10% of the overall top-to-bottom ranking. And we also know from past experience that though it is important to have a good graduation rate, graduation rate does not necessarily mean that students are learning what they need to learn. So again, the same priority school as before, and this school has a 64 graduation rate and a 4% annual improvement in graduation rate. The mid-level comparison school, 79% graduation rate with a 1% annual improvement, and the same high-level comparison school as before, again, a 95% graduation rate with a 2% annual improvement in, in graduation rate. And again, just to come back to the, the sense that we have all of these things kind of conflating together, all of these challenges conflating together in priority schools.
So we, we wanted to talk a little bit about what these schools are like in terms of the culture and climate and some of those other issues, when, before the intervention begins. Like Joseph said, there's identification, that's how they become priority schools. And then we begin a series of very intensive interventions. And this presentation is not as much about the interventions, we're going to talk briefly about it. That's a, that's its own presentation, really. But like Joseph alluded to, these schools are in the school reform office under the leadership of Deb Clemens, and then the Office of Educational Improvement and Innovation, the Office of Strategic Research and, Office of Evaluation, Strategic Research and Accountability, OFS, all of us work together. These become our schools. And so we've become very invested in, in what happens with them after that. I mean, we were invested before, but in a new way, we're very engaged. One way that we're engaged is we actually begin doing monitoring when these schools become priority schools. So to kind of put the, the wrapper around the achievement data, we went to the, the monitors, the MDE monitors, and said, what did you see? First time in the school, when you first started going out to a new priority school or new PLA school, what did you see? What were some of the issues that they were facing? And so they, they talked a lot about, they looked back through their monitoring reports and they, they talked a lot about these things. A lot of teacher absences, you know, it's just not teachers in the building, not teachers in the classrooms. Acrimony among adults and a toxic culture. And I actually also reached out to three principals from our very first cohort of persistently lowest achieving schools. And one of, and I, I'll thank them in a minute, but one of them reiterated this, that the culture among the staff, students, and parents and community was almost toxic. So this need to really address this, this cultural issue before we can start working on achievement at some level, or changing the culture to be focused on achievement and not on whatever was causing the toxicity. There were some very structural issues, schools with mechanical failures, an inhospitable environment, you know, police and security officers and metal detectors, especially in the larger cities. You know, at some level, this is the world we live in, but thinking about how that interacts with a student's achievement and how do you minimize that impact on them is something that's been important. Very high suspension rates, particularly with African-American youth, and this is something we've seen in our, our achievement gap work, which again, Deb has been leading at for us, that this is, this is an issue outside of just priority schools, but certainly the priority schools were more likely to be suspending these African-American students, perhaps, perhaps appropriately according to the code of conduct, but it took them out of the classroom and out of the school. And then students in the hallways during, during instructional time. There were a number of instructional issues. So a lot of sit-and-get, teachers standing at the front, very low-level learning tasks, lots of substitute teachers. This is something we're hearing from different districts as well, that, you know, when you have 60% of your teachers, your classes being taught by substitute teachers, this is, this is a structural, it's going to be difficult for good instruction to happen. Teachers lacking the subject matter expertise and the skill that they need, and then the failure to use data to drive instruction. And again, I wanted to, one of the, one of those principals from the first year really cited, I asked them, what are the three things you had to address as a principal to change, to change what was going on in the PLA school, your PLA schools? And he said, there was a lack of teacher collaboration and focus on the use of meaningful data to drive decision-making. So they, having to, teachers aren't working together, teachers aren't looking at their data, and it's going to be, be difficult for academics to be strong. The third thing we really saw across the schools were leadership issues. Rotating building and district leadership, you know, we had monitors saying they've had three different principals in the last three years. So schools really struggling to even have somebody provide direction and guidance to them. Leaders in the schools who didn't necessarily have the skills to work in a turnaround environment. And so I think the three principals that we reached out to who were, again, they were principals from the first cohort of priority schools. Those schools are now reward schools. They've moved, you know, they've moved up, they've really changed their culture. They had, it sounds like, it would appear, they had what it took to provide, or to work in a turnaround environment, but we know that not all of our principals in the, in the field are trained in that, are prepared for that, or know what to do. Maybe not for lack, I would imagine, rarely for lack of desire, but that, there's very specific skills you need to do this. And a lot of the principals in these priority schools did not have them. That's what our monitors saw. Again, on the principals, a failure or a difficulty in providing instructional leadership. And this is something we talk about a lot, the switch of a, a building leader from a person, you know, hitting the buses in and out, which is important, got to have buses, to an instructional leader. And how we need our principals to be instructional leaders, again, in our priority schools and beyond. But certainly our priority schools, there was, they were struggling with that. This kind of willingness to invest in programs and initiatives that weren't showing any payoff. And then, this is a big one, and they, they talked about this as well. payoff, and then, this is a big one, and they, they talked about this as well, the principals did, multiple initiatives with little focus. So you see one school had 39 different initiatives, and one of the principals that I asked said, "We were on initiative overload. We had a lot of everything, and we did, we didn't do any of it well." So needing to focus in and say, "What are we going to, what are we going to actually change here, and how are we going to implement it with fidelity?" And then last, there was a set of issues around these priority schools related to governance. So lack of autonomy to the principals. Many of them have financial deficits at the district level, and again, what, one of the things we found working in priority schools, and one of the reasons a lot of our supports deal with building district capacity, is that you have to have support from central office, you have to have more intensive support in failing schools, you have to have finances in order, you know, you have to have a system that works. And I think Eileen talked in the item before about, you can't say, "Okay, K8 is broken," and then they're gonna go to the high school, and the high school's gonna fail, and it's a high school issue. You know, often in these schools, there was a systemic issue, and the districts were not preparing to intervene in a way that, that helped it, helped it be solved in a more systems-based way. Couple more things, no clear process for identifying data and pinpointing the real problems, too many goals, too many initiatives. This is a quote from one of the principals, they had, they hired someone to come in and help them, oh no, this is our, this was our specialist who was in there with them. So MDE sent them an improvement specialist to help them with this, and the, they said, you know, you guys are, this is the quote, "You guys are doing an excellent job of teaching all the wrong things. Curriculum is not aligned to what it needed to be, so they're, they're doing a great job, and it's not what, what needed to be taught." This is really, really compelling. When I heard this at a priority schools technical assistance meetings from one of these principals, that they, that we were not a school characterized by a culture of achievement. And what he said there is, "We were focused on care and compassion, but not on student achievement, and we had to change that." And I thought that that was really, really a compelling diagnosis from, from this building leader. And then, this was another thing that was said at that technical assistance meeting, that these schools needed to learn to set the needs of the school, the community above the needs of adults, and that that was a challenge that the leaders had to take on in their initial years in the priority schools. Before I move on, I do wanna, I do actually want to name them and thank them for this. Deb Paquette from Bloomingdale is one of the principals. Bloomingdale was one of our first high schools, we showed a video from them last week. Chris Timis was the principal at Adrian, he's now at a different district. And then David Eichberg was the principal at Marion Springs High School. And he talked a lot about the culture of achievement, as well as the concern they didn't have a gap, they had a gap in their sequential courses, kids weren't taking things in a way that made any sense. So I think when you look at these leaders, it helps you see both the depth of the issues, but also how they had to step up and deal with instruction and achievement. They had to make a commitment, a couple of these principals cited that they had to make a commitment to teach the kids who were there. In one district, it was Schools of Choice was bringing in a bunch of kids, and in others, it was Schools of Choice was taking out a bunch of kids. Of course, I mean, so it's interesting how that one cuts both ways in a sample of three. I heard a ringing endorsement and a ringing not endorsement. Either way, both principals had to say, "We're gonna teach the kids who are here." And this is to Mike's point about escape patches, it's not, if we had different kids, it'd be different, it's about, these are the kids who are here, and these principals had to do that.
Vanessa, if you had to capture a headline for our folks over there to compress all of what you just showed, this is the good news story is?
The good news story for priority schools who turn it around is that by focusing on achievement, fixing the culture and climate, they've been able to turn around their trajectory.
And these are the three that were here, and now they're reward schools. I just want to make sure, not lost in the data here, is this is basically a good news story about three schools that have been highlighted. Joseph, are you ready to add something?
I think it's, you can address the culture and climate and focus issues, and it's clear that this is not about the students that an individual school serves. The data and the experience with these priority schools that went to reward schools speaks to that very clearly.
And you know, I'm just gonna, my own experience with talking, especially to superintendents often about this, is, I mean, it's just self-evident, if it can be done, if it is being done somewhere, it can be done. I mean, these are why we have to keep kind of rewarding these and celebrating these kinds of schools. Otherwise, we're gonna always hear the escape hatch. And I mean, it, it's not easy, but it has to be done, we owe it to be done, it is being done, and then therefore, it has to be part of taking away excuses in other places where it's said, "We can't get it done." I mean, that's Kathleen, and then Eileen.
Well, thanks for this.
Were you done yet? I'm sorry.
Not quite, we have just a couple more, but I mean, however you'd like to.
Okay, that's my fault. Good, please, go ahead, and then we'll, Kathleen.
We're really near the end, I promise, I'm sure there's lots of questions. Just to show, and again, this is for another day in greater detail, but this is how the department supports priority schools, once they're named priority schools. So you see the School Reform Office is working in these schools all, you know, consistently. And then we have the MyExcel statewide system of support, which provides support out through our partnership with MSU, as well as with our ISDs and Michigan Virtual University. And then Advanced Ed provides supports to all schools in terms of school improvement planning and those resources. I am sorry to the people who I'm skipping the support slides, but I think there's a lot of questions, and we can talk more about supports if you'd like. We do want, well, no, I'm reversing that, I'm gonna talk about supports for a minute.
Yes.
I apologize. So you noticed when we went through the challenges, the challenges were around leadership, instruction, culture, climate, and governance and systems. Those were challenges we saw in the four priority schools, and so we've developed a system of supports to try to address those challenges. So in leadership, they have access to things like Principal Academy, networking, coaching, and assistance with data-driven decision-making around instruction, they have things, I'm not gonna read all of them, but things like Instructional Leadership Academy, the Survey of Anacted Curriculum, that helps them figure out if they're teaching what they should be, are they teaching the curriculum they think they're teaching, to that question on, "We are doing an excellent job of teaching all the wrong things." Culture, climate, School Improvement Facilitators, the African-American Young Men of Promise pilot is one that we're working on there. And then in the governance and systems, helping them with things like data dialogues, we saw a presentation yesterday on the data dialogue tool that we built for these schools that helps them, Mike said this earlier, helps them get past the escape patches. Well, it's because of this, or it's this reason, and get to, what is actually going on so that we can change what we need to change? We provide supports for teachers, descriptive data about current classroom practice to inform reflective dialogue. We get that through School Improvement Facilitators, and then the grade level meetings, and we do a lot of networking and online tools and surveys. Do a lot of support for school leaders to build their capacity. Again, we know that we, as the department, we have to get beyond saying, "Hey, principals, be instructional leaders, provide better leadership." That's not going to help, per se. So how do we provide tools where they can learn? How can they reflect on their practice and become stronger leaders? So we do that both with onsite work, coaching conversations, and then access to some of those other resources we described above. Again, we also target district leaders, that getting, if we identify these misalignments in the district systems, then we can get to changes at the building level. And then our last kind of slides, Joseph mentioned at the beginning, the offices that are involved in the supports. We also had extensive offices involved in this presentation, so we'd like to thank them for a minute. If you guys can stand up while I say your names, that'd be great. Daniel Leeds and Shannon Stackhouse Flores are our two new Harvard Strategic Data Fellows, which I'll talk about more in a minute, and were instrumental in putting together this presentation. Dan did an especially large data lift on this for us. You guys can sit down. Chris Janzer and Jacqueline Dannis from the Office of Evaluation, Strategic Research and Accountability were also very involved, and Dan Ledoux, I don't see him here, but I believe he assisted on the presentation as well. Deb Clemens from the School Reform Office, maybe she wants to wave, Linda Ford from the Office of Educational Improvement and Innovation, Steve Best from the Office of Educational Improvement and Innovation, and Julie Han-Frank from School Reform Office. And if I missed anybody, I am, oh, Julie, I didn't see you behind Carol's head, Julie's over there as well. If I missed anybody, I'm, I'm very sorry. It was very exciting for Joseph and I, because normally, this presentation, deciding to do it would have meant that Joseph and I did it in our spare time. But we were able to pull together a really, a wonderful research team and data team across the offices and say, "Here's what we need to do, guys," and then we get to sit here and take the credit for the great presentation, so we're pretty excited about that. I did wanna, I mentioned we have two Harvard Strategic Data Fellows. This is sidebar into the Strategic Research and Evaluation Initiative, and then I will take your, or we'll stop. A couple years ago, we learned about something called the Harvard Strategic Data Partnership, which is something run out of the Harvard Grad School of Education, where they do a nationwide search, it's kind of like Teach for America, except it's really Data for America, to put people with good quantitative and policy skills in state agencies to help build capacity, to leverage data and research for action. And so we partnered with SEPI, was a funding partner on this, as was OEII, and we have two data fellows, as well as one agency fellow, that's someone within the agency, that would be Jonathan Dahl this year, Jonathan, this year somewhere?
They're all training for something else.
Okay, they're training for something else. And this really has allowed us to increase our dedicated capacity to enact our strategic research initiatives. So something that Joseph and I have been working on for years, we're very, very excited, both about Melissa and the interns and the associates, but about these two full-time people, plus the agency fellow. It's a cool cohort model, we're gonna train together, it's a very exciting way to increase our ability to do the rapid response and longer-term research. So we just had to put a plug, and also, you'll be hearing and seeing a lot from the two of them, hopefully, and we're just glad that they're here. So with that, Mike?
Well, you can, I think it's a little bit coincidental that the two presentations this morning give, especially our audience, and to some degree, maybe the board, a look at what our daily work is really like, 'cause I think it can be perceived as something different than, I mean, this is what goes on every day, this kind of stuff. And I wanna, you know, they're always so humble, but these two guys here are tremendous, and they can give all the credit which is deserved, but they certainly deserve a fair share of it for where we're headed. So thank you for that, and now, questions, comments from board members. And I think it was Kathleen and Eileen that started, I'm sorry.
Thanks again. It's what we were saying before about establishing this research, but you know, a lot of what you've found sort of confirms what we've heard before about the leadership being absolutely critical, principal, and we've developed principals academies and this kind, but we haven't been able to train enough people, I guess, to be, or enough people to be good, good principals in these kinds of situations. That's very difficult. So that's one thing. But the other thing that you mentioned that we used to hear a lot about was the need to focus. We've heard that same complaint over the years, that there's, we've got too many plans. Everybody had a different plan for a different grant or something, and it was, and they, everybody was in their own direction, and they weren't focused. So those things we've known for a long time, it's not new. So when we do the, you said we do intervention for at least four years, is that the department staff going in, or the ISD people going in, or people from the universities going in? And are they, how often are they there? Are they there constantly, or they just come once a month? How does that work?
So, and if either Deb or Linda wants to chime in, feel free. So once they're named a priority school, we really do start a pretty rigorous set of interventions, and thinking about, you know, the need to serve almost 4,000 schools, and what we usually do versus what we do here, which is much more hands-on. We provide supports out through a number of ways. The School Reform Office works with them directly on things like their turnaround plans, and approves all their plans, reviews all their plans. And then they also have monitors, who are out currently four times a year, five, six? Four? Four, there's some triaging if they have, you know, but in general, about four times a year, they get monitored, and Julie is actually leading an effort to rethink our monitoring system, to have it focused more on continuous improvement. We're really excited about that initiative. And they also, the SRO also offers a lot of those, those supports that people take advantage of. So a big part of what we do is work with them on the plan, and get to a workable plan, and align your plan with the school improvement plan, so we don't have, you know, a school improvement plan, and a reform plan, and this other plan. The team's done a fabulous job of aligning plans. We've really made a lot of progress in that in the last few years. I think we have a little bit of distance to go, but we have really pulled it in so that schools are focusing more, and it's exciting. And then the MyExcel offers supports more through the ISDs than the district level. So the School Reform Office is more directly involved in the schools, and this is kind of a generalization, but the MyExcel does the district improvement facilitators, that the MSU staffs those people, and they're, they're at the district level. And then the ISDs are very engaged as well, through the School Improvement Facilitator Network and other supports. Would either of you like to add anything about how we intervene with schools? No?
So I did want to jump in there a little bit, say something that I don't think has been said at the table before, but this is, this is evidence of the Department of Education making a shift from being primarily compliance-focused. You know, just getting to compliance with state and federal law is a heavy lift, it really is, it's a heavy lift just to get to compliance. But this is about going beyond what we just have to do to comply with the law, to really help the schools. We've tried to do that on Accountability Services side, Education Services side, each of the divisions has these initiatives that are saying, "Okay, what can we do to support schools beyond just going to making sure that schools are compliant with the federal law and doing that?" So trying to make data tools that are user-friendly for schools, trying to make these interventions really hands-on and helpful to schools rather than just a compliance act.
And that's been a big thing, to pull the data and the accountability pieces. The data, the offices represented here meet regularly, what is it, every two weeks, three weeks? It's the best cross-office collaboration we have in terms of, we know that if we're going to be effective with these schools, we have to really, as a department, be aligned and focus on them in new ways. And so when they get their accountability data, that ties to their interventions and their school improvement plans, and we build new tools, it's been exciting. I did want to say too, and then I'll let go of this, you ask how many times we go out, that's not as standardized, because it has something to do with, it is to some extent, some of the monitoring, but some of it has to do with what they identify as their needs and what supports they identify as needing. So we're trying to do more customized kind of supports. We're trying to here, do a better job of saying, "Here's the buffet of options, but let's help you choose options that really fit with your identified needs," so that people get more focused. So there's some differentiation in that.
Thank you. Eileen, and then Richard, and then Cassandra.
Excuse me. Well, I have, thank you. It's a great report, and more than that, it does show good news, which is very heartening. Can we acknowledge the three new schools that are off the priority list in this report and post them on the websites? Is there, are we worried that they will slide back? Is there anything that we don't want to really get too public about? Because if we could, I'd like to amend the report to include it. If we can't, I understand.
I think, Linda, did you want to?
My only concern is that there are more than that. There are more schools than that that came off the priority list and are moving up, so we'd want to...
Why don't we do all of them?
Why don't we do all of them?
We'll do all of them. I mean, we do, that's why we invented, as you know, reward schools a couple of years ago in general, and they do get, some of you have been able to attend and actually give them that distinction, but why don't we just include all of them? Are you good with that, Linda?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then I, of course, because I never asked this one question, are there any lessons to be learned from the districts who are, you know, it's not just the schools, there's support going on in another way. Are any of them charter schools? Are any of the authorizers doing a really good job of moving schools along on the spectrum? Are any districts really stepping forward? Are any of them EAA? They can't be. They probably aren't EAA schools, there's not enough data yet. I mean, we're just doing the MEBS, the first MEBS for the kids in the school. But is there anything that you're able to use for future work coming out of this?
I think, Eileen, you're giving us a great segue to the second version of, or the second step of this report, which is more focused on the progress that the schools have made with the supports and what we're learning from that. That, we didn't really focus on it here, 'cause we wanted to talk a little bit about the landscape of what was. But Deb has been working on a couple of different reports, we have some other things that we need to, that we would like to share over time about what's happening once you become a priority school. So that was, I think, if we can do that in a separate report versus off the cuff right now, that would be...
And I would just add one thing, I mean, I kind of codified in my own thinking and every speech, every opportunity I have, particularly in the family, the education family, is find the school that's like yours that is on the reward list. This isn't really rocket science. Because even with all the supports that we've talked about, some prove with those supports and some don't. So it's also ultimately about how they have lifted themselves up as a team. And so it's, it's not magic. I mean, you've been in these schools, some of these schools, you can tell the second you step in that door, it's that culture, climate piece, and you can see when you're meeting with them. But I just, I could, it's the single best piece of advice I would give, go to the list, find a reward school that's like yours, and similar to yours, and as you could see from Joseph's earlier things, those three schools that they kept highlighting, socioeconomic are the same. three schools that they kept highlighting, socioeconomic are the same. So, all those demographics, rather, are the same. And so, in this case, if they could do that, hook up, that's where I would do professional development. I wouldn't necessarily have someone coming in, you know, I'd be saying, we're getting on a bus, or we're going to get over there, or we're going to invite them here, or we're going to get on the phone, or we're going to video conference. How did you do this? What did you do? Teacher to teacher, principal to principal. I think Richard was next, and Cassandra, and then Michelle?
Yeah, I had two, I guess, discreet issues. One, on the scattergrams, or whatever the, this particular thing is, I would be very interested in somehow combining the dots over maybe three years, to see if schools wander out of their quadrants, just to see how stable this data is over time, from one year to the next. And it's the difference between horses in a horse race on the first round, where, you know, they're all basically bunched together, and who's in first and who's in last may change several times in that first round, and a horse race after the eighth lap, where, you know, the horses that are at the end are never going to catch up, and the horses in the middle are probably going to, you know, finish in the middle. So, that's my one, just express interest in that issue. And the other is, I heard two facets of information about school climate. One, that some of these schools have a toxic climate, and second, that some of these schools have a philosophy of supportive nurturing kind of climate. And is there overlap? Are these two separate groups of schools, or are there schools where the adults imagine they're providing nurturing climate for kids while ready to fight with each other? I'm just, how do those two bits fit together?
So, I deviated from my normal instincts, which would be to put together a culture and climate survey, and give it out to everybody, and analyze it, and take six months, and went more with, we called these three people and said, what do you think? So, this is very much a convenient sample, as in, I conveniently heard them talk and found them fascinating. So, they weren't the same people. One said, we have a, two of them said we had a toxic culture, one said we had a culture that wasn't focused on achievement, it was focused on care and compassion. So, at least in my sample of three, they, there was not overlap. You know, I think it's a good question, though, is it, could a toxic culture be perceived as a culture of non-achievement or whatnot? But, at least in these three, it was different. And one, at least, they were kind of engaging with the kids, it felt like, but not around achievement, around, let's make sure you feel good. And that is important, you know, and I don't think we want to sit here and say, schools shouldn't care about kids. But, schools are there to educate kids and to improve their achievement, first and foremost, and the other things are vehicles. It was the other two that said there was just toxic culture among the staff, and the students, and the parents, and a lot of negativity. So...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Cassandra, then Michelle?
I think what I was going to say was pretty much addressed by Eileen and Richard already, which is really the results piece of this. To be able to see, okay, so the department's doing all of this intervention, you know, what are the results of that? And I think, I think it could be a learning opportunity for us as well, because, you know, we go to these schools, and we say, try something. If it doesn't work, let's try something else. We might need to take our own advice. And there are certain interventions that are working really, really well, and are showing great results, and others maybe not so much. So, I would be really interested in seeing that second piece of the report that you mentioned that you're going to be working on, because I think it'll really, it'll be very enlightening. So...
Good point, good point. Michelle, please.
Yeah. I just had some basic questions, first of all. So, on the number two, where it talks about the methodology, the components of this, when it talks about student achievement level, is that the test scores?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the individual progress or school-wide improvement, that's test scores?
Yes.
Okay. The size of the achievement gap is based on test scores, right?
Yes.
And it's based on, is it just racial, or is it a gap between anything else?
It's a gap between the top 30% in a school and the bottom 30% in a school.
Okay, so regardless, it's just a gap between the top and the bottom? Okay, thank you. And then, the graduation rate, which I know in Detroit has been pretty difficult, because they can't tell if someone transfers to a charter school, as opposed to, you know, oftentimes, the transfers and the dropout rate get mixed together. So...
So, just to clarify on that, we do have a longitudinal data system that takes that into account, and if they transfer to a charter school, it does not go back to the Detroit public schools.
Okay, so you know if they went out of district, or if they went out of, okay. All right. So, when we're talking about achievement, we're talking about improving test scores, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, some people may question that, and say, is that truly what achievement's about, is doing better on, you know, high-stakes test scores? So, I just wanted to sort of get back to that. I know it's one measure. We also know that research shows us that test scores are more, are linked, a greater predictor of your parent's income. Okay? So, that's, those two correlate very closely. And I know there are exceptions on the scattergram, but overwhelmingly, the priority schools are poverty schools, schools of color, urban, you know, but high-poverty schools, overwhelmingly. Now, I know there are exceptions to that, and that's great. But, I think we're sort of missing the bigger picture by looking at individual schools, and not looking at policies to really address and move, make a greater impact amongst a greater number of schools. I also have a problem with sort of this, always the bottom 5%. There will always be a bottom 5%, regardless of, even if everyone did great. You know, there's always using that as a system to drop into the EAA, or wherever they go. So, I think that's an important perspective to keep in mind. I also have some questions about the intervention once people are identified, because I've gotten some reports back that some of the, and I don't know, you know, you hear so much when you go out. And so, I'm using this as an opportunity to hopefully understand. I've been told that certain people are recommended as consultants for the school, and that they're being recommended by the Department of Ed. Now, I don't, I question that, and I, but I, but I've been hearing that, that there's particular folks, especially around people who, you know, sell around cultural competencies, those types of things. And I don't know if that's accurate, or if you want to, if you could respond to if there are recommendations about certain, connecting with certain consulting folks, or, you know, is there a list of people that these might be possible?
Please speak to that. Let's speak to that. One at a time, we've got a bunch on the plate there. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm done.
Please. No, you can add to this. I just wanted to be able to speak to that one before you proceed.
I, and Deb, I don't know, would you like to come down and address this, or Linda? She, we don't, the question is, do we recommend certain consulting firms or people? Do our consultants, do we recommend to priority schools certain consulting firms or people?
Or income, yeah.
So, I just, yeah, and Linda wants to add on to that as well.
I just would add to that, that if they're a SIG school, they must choose from a list of approved vendors. And we do screen vendors, and we publish that list of vendors, but that's only to make sure that they meet a certain set of criteria. Beyond that, they're free to choose whatever they want.
So, maybe that's what I'm hearing.
It could be.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But, this is also the same, the other end of that are, or observation, or anecdotal, or whatever it is, is why Texas and others are in trouble, is because they don't screen this stuff. And suddenly, you ever have every hack under the world giving services and making millions of dollars. So, part of this is trying to, we talked about this a few years ago at the board table.
Well, if there's a way to, let's say, you're using someone on that list, and they're performing in a way that's questionable, is there a way to report that?
Absolutely. We ask them to come back and let us know. They have to negotiate the contracts, it's up to them if they want that vendor or not. We've had them change vendors because the match wasn't good.
Okay.
And if we hear that there's questionable practice, then we'll take that vendor down.
Okay, thank you.
And I do think that, I think there's genuine, well, your, and your, the first points, Michelle, did you have any comments on?
Yeah, so just wanted to respond to a couple of the, a couple of the issues. Just to be, just to be clear, we have never used less than 120 kids per school to identify a school. We are very careful to make sure that we have stable measures going into this. In addition, when we made the switch, so this was quite a switch, going from something that was criterion reference, which was AYP, towards something that was norm reference. Criterion reference means every school meets a certain threshold. We were having a, actually quite a large number of schools not meeting those thresholds. And the flexibility waiver allowed us to move toward, for intervention, focusing on those that needed the most. That means that we reduced the number of schools that are responsible to implement these significant interventions. And it allows us to focus where it is, actually where it is needed the most. And the question of whether or not we should use these particular measures, they are the measures that we have. They are the measures that we have to implement policy levers. We understand that there are, that there are other things that schools need to be doing. There are other things that we could measure, but don't have the capability or resources to be able to do that. So, the issue is being able to identify those that need the most help in these critical areas, in the critical core academic areas, which is what we're trying to do with the priority schools.
And to add on to that, you mentioned that there's always a bottom 5%. That is true, when you have to identify the lowest, that there's a bottom. We've said repeatedly that when we reach a place where the bottom five are high-performing, we need to move away from a system where we identify the bottom five. But, we're certainly not there now. The proficiency rates in these schools are abysmal. And, you know, we know that there are reasons for that, and that's why we're working on them, but we're certainly not at the place right now where we can say the bottom five are okay, and we need to move to a new system.
And whenever we say, we're working on them, I need to just say this, we need to emphasize, they need to be working on them. We're a local-controlled district, we have 4,000 schools, we have even a couple of hundred of priority schools. And I think you are, I hope you're impressed with the amount we're able to give of support, with the limited resources that we have here. But, ultimately, part of the reason we wanted to show this today is, if it is being done, it can be done. And I, but I think you're making a good point, that there are other overarching issues that this shouldn't be instead of, you know, we're just saying, we can do both. We can do these, and we can also look at system issues that aren't supporting schools that are in poverty, and that we, you know, I mean...
Can I make one follow-up thing? And I kind of have to quiet for a while. My concern is that when I read about sort of the anecdotal survey, that, you know, the responses from those three people, is to what the cause is, you know, this toxic environment, acrimony among adults, things like that. I think it's, you know, if we look at that as being the, I think that's more of a symptom than the underlying cause, the underlying problems. The underlying problems are, you know, lax, like in Detroit. I mean, the teachers are fired every year, and then rehired, shuffled around schools, principals move like crazy, they're, you know, people are leaving in droves. They're being blamed, you know, the same teachers, you know, if they can go to an affluent community, all of a sudden, they're highly effective. And when they go to a school that, in this environment, they're labeled as ineffective. So, why would someone want, why would teachers want to work in an area where the, where the underlying issues are going to make them labeled as poor, where if they just go to another school, they'll be seen as, I think it's a, it's a much larger systematic issue, and to just say, it's the, it's the adults who don't care about kids is a gross oversimplization of what is really going on, because there's all these, you know, this whole, you know, systematic...
Churning.
Churning. Turning, that are going on. And then, yet, we'll say, well, it's the teacher, that's who's responsible for this, or it's the principal, that's who's responsible for this, when it's much larger than that.
Well, just to be clear on the three, these are, these are folks that say, this is what was, and now, in many cases, with the same staff, is not. So, we're just trying to show it can be done. They're reporting that it's gone from toxic to non-toxic, why they think that. But, I think you're making an excellent point about the system issues, which, again, we should be able to do both, this and the system issues that, I mean, I taught at Wayne State, as you know, for 15 years, and I couldn't, I couldn't believe by the time, because it was at night, how appropriately demoralized folks were by the time they got to class. Because they've been through a day of the churning and the expectations, and, I mean, it is a very, that's a legitimate, totally legitimate issue. I mean, I think one way to solve it overnight would be the state gives almost extra pay for those that are willing to serve in, and the state funds it or something, something like that, that you somehow encourage folks to stay in the most difficult situations. But, you're making an excellent point. This churning is a giant problem, and the reason we're actually isolating schools, kind of in a different way, we're not, we're not discounting that argument, we're just saying, by their self-acclimation, they're saying, here's what we did in these schools. But, I would not, I think you're making an excellent point. And this is particularly true in the schools that, I mean, even, even the principals' issues that we're talking about, if you're going to be a principal, and you want to, you know, and even if you're not a money-oriented person, you just happen to be able to make a lot more money three miles away, and you don't have nearly the pressures, and, you know, it's like we're taking our most talented people, and we don't have them in the toughest spots. I mean, that's almost a state system issue that, even in a local-controlled district, that we could somehow try to design in a way that would give it, my easiest way to think about it would be incentive money, or something, or some other kinds of recognitions to go where it's toughest. Having said all that, I'm still, we're still want to focus on at least the ones that even with all of that said and done, they're moving the ball. And until the system can get redesigned, we want to focus on the ones that have been able to work under this constraints of that. Craig, I think you were next.
Yeah.
And then Kathleen was.
In the observations of leadership, do you, do you assess the oversight and effectiveness of school boards? I trace a lot of stuff back to governance.
Right. The short answer is no. Like Mike said, we're a local-control state, so we don't directly intervene or do anything with boards. I think, and we, our leverage point is with the principals, with the districts, with the superintendent, with the, with those staffs. I think it's a good point, though, about that's the other layer of governance, that what the road, what that would look like, how we would intervene with them, I'm not sure, or interact with them. But, we focus on the district and the school leadership. But, I think it's a good point about, that's certainly a strong level of governance for the locals as well.
Right.
We don't want to set a dangerous precedent, they might start intervening with this board, you know?
Kathleen?
Well, I'm getting back to what Michelle was talking about. One of the points you make here is that principals change every two, two years, every one year, and the frequent turnover of the leadership. That's disaster, it seems to me, and this whole business. One of the things that, it seems to me, I was happy to hear that Detroit was putting in social services and health services in more of the schools, and have what we used to call full-day, full-service schools. That in itself will help, I think, a lot of socioeconomic problems. But, we have to, I've been saying this for a long time, that we have to recognize that there, we have to do more than just in the schools. We have to help families, help families with sometimes just to eat. And now, I don't know how we do that with food status of being cut back, and, but, I mean, it's more than just the school. Although, I know we're focused on the school, and we have to be, and we should be. But, I think we also have to recognize it, and I'm glad that the governor's office has seen you to pick up this idea that we've been pushing, I've been pushing for many years, is this full-day, full-service. But, putting the services in the schools makes the parents more comfortable, they get more comfortable. Talking about parent involvement, they get used to going into the school, and they then start talking to the teachers, in addition to getting their health services, or their social services, or whatever they need. And many of the parents are intimidated going into a school, they're intimidated by the principals. Some of the principals have a policy, you know, whatever it is, there's an atmosphere, the climate, if you want to call it that, that makes parents not feel welcome or comfortable. And that's something that's part of the climate that has to be recognized, too. Because we keep saying that parental involvement is critical. I call it constructive parental involvement, is critical, because we get a lot that isn't constructive. In order to do that with the kinds of populations that many of the schools deal with, it requires helping those parents be made to feel, be helped to feel comfortable just going into the school, much less talking to the teachers. So, there's a whole... So there's a whole, it's much more than just, when they, when you say they, they wanted, they, they did nurturing, if they did nurturing for a year, then their score should start going up. Was that not the case, or did you not have enough time?
That's what they're saying. They're saying that the nurturing wasn't enough, that without having a culture of achievement as part of the nurturing, they weren't getting the results. And again, these are their words. When they said, we need to be more focused on the needs of the, the children and not the needs of the adults, that's what, that's what they said. And I think that's kind of, when we talk to our Beating the Odds schools, one of the things that they talk about is how they've reached out to the wraparound services and how they've brought in things like that. And I, to me, that's part of them recognizing that they need to be focused more on the, what can we do to solve the problem for the kids versus what are the challenges of the adults? Not that it's ever an either/or, but how do we address that first? That's what they're saying, at least.
Well, and I think, you know, to link back to previous comments, the issue, the issue really is that the symptom is the low achievement, low improvements, and again, just for, for some background, achievement, achievement comprises 50% of the top to bottom. You can get out of that if you have high rates of improvement or you have low achievement gaps. But yes, the, those are symptoms. All those things that combine to come together to, to identify you as a, as a priority school are symptoms. And we, we look at those issues, and, and, so if you, if you come back again, let me pull this down just a little bit. Leadership, instruction, governance and systems, and culture and climate. Those are the kinds of things that we are, that we are finding have to be addressed in priority schools. They are challenges. Certainly, we'd like to be able to address some of the things that even underline these, underlie these things, but these are the things that we identify as needing to be addressed in priority schools and providing the support so that people can address them. So it's, it's about, the top to bottom list is a symptom. It's a symptom check. We talk about what we can do to address those symptoms by helping people improve leadership, instruction, governance, and, and culture and climate.
You know, I, to maybe tie in Kath, Kathy's point, and I think Craig bringing up the boards, I had a chance last week that Kathy Hayes invited me to meet with a relatively small group to think about where, you know, to get my view anyway, and where they should be and where, where they should be less defensive. And partly, I'm sure I was invited in because of the consolidation controversy, which I, you know, we've never thought, one size fits all, by the way. But what drove us into that were these discussions on focus on academics. And if you, if, I, I know this, and I asked them if they had a way to do this, but I think if they took board minutes or board agendas from local boards over the last five years, and tried to look at the percentage of things that they're doing on burgers and buses versus almost no, no work at, to the level that, I think it would shock us. And I was responsible that, in that same way as a local superintendent. It's just what drives your work, contract approval, this and that. You know, by contract, I mean, you know, what are you, what are you going to do for the food? Who are you buying your milk from? I mean, boards involved in all that stuff, and they're, this is one reason that even if the money isn't to be saved, and I would argue that, but even if the money isn't to be saved, they can focus if this goes to another entity. And we've got these entities in this state that most don't, which are ISDs that could fairly easily take over many of these services. And that doesn't mean get rid of the high school, that doesn't mean get rid of the local school, but they, I mean, I would love if they take me up on that and actually see what percent, I bet it's over, I bet it's over 70% of agendas are spent on issues like that at their board meeting as opposed to any of this. So through no fault of their own, almost, they can't focus on the very thing that ends up counting the most. But that, that's a bit of an aside. I think Dan was next.
Am I next?
Yes, sir. Probably last.
I have, I don't know how you want to handle this. So I just want to signpost so that you can decide how to handle this. I have one, two, three, four questions and four comments.
Are they ABCs, or are they one, two, threes?
The...
They're ABCs, I think.
The questions are, I think, fairly simple.
Okay.
The comments, maybe not.
The answers might not be...
We can handle that.
Hopefully, the answers will be simple. I think they're pretty simple answers, though. So...
Sure.
Go for it until you stop me?
Well, or, or other board members do.
All right. First question, so the first two questions have to do with the identification process that's used. How much, just remind me, I just have forgotten, how much is the achievement weighted versus the progress or growth?
So it's weighted one-half for achievement, one-quarter for progress, and one-quarter for achievement gap.
And the 10% high school graduate?
Okay, so, yes, I'm, I'm going to have to modify that answer, it's not as simple as you thought. All right, so it's one-half achievement, one-quarter progress, and one-quarter achievement gap for each subject. Overall, graduation rate is 10%. Then what is left over is split out equally among the number of subjects that a high school has. If there is no graduation rate, for example, elementary and middle schools, then that 100% is split equally among the subject areas tested in the school.
Say that one more time, before I dissolve this.
Okay. For each subject area, we create a composite index, which is made up one-half of achievement, one-quarter of improvement, and one-quarter of achievement gap. Then we take all those composite index subjects and create an overall composite for a whole school. If the school has a graduation rate, then 10% is reserved for graduation rate, the remaining 90% is split equally among all the subjects tested in the school. If the school does not have a graduation rate, then the entire index is split equally among all the subjects tested in the school.
Okay. So the grad, so the, so proficiency here is going to either be 40% or about, so when you do have the graduation rate, the remaining 90% gets split between all the subjects, 50% of that 90 is still proficiency?
Yes.
Okay. So proficiency is either going to be 50% or 45% of the overall grade? Okay, that's question number one, thank you. Two, and just stop me whenever, and I can get back in the queue. Two is, one of the slides said, once again on identification, bottom 5%, and then referenced less than a 60% graduation rate. Is that just, is it, is that an and criteria? So it's both, bottom 5% and less than 60%?
It's an or.
It's an or?
Yes, and that's a federal requirement that in order, we have to identify both those that are in significant need of improvement in terms of achievement, and they ask us also to wait improvement, and, and we added achievement gap, it's a state option. But the heavy, the heavy emphasis under federal requirement is achievement. We, they ask us also to add improvement, we added achievement gap at our option. But the, one of the additional requirements is that any school that has a less than 60% graduation rate for three years running must be a priority school.
Got it. That's just for high schools?
Yes.
Okay.
How about one more, Dan, so we can get to the next item?
Great. Next item on the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, man, really? Can you shut me down like that?
We can always come back to that.
Yes. We'll, we'll come back to this?
We can always come back to that.
You mean in a future meeting?
Maybe this afternoon.
Oh. Okay.
So pick your best one.
No, I won't do that. The comments are the best ones, but they're longer. So maybe one other, the last question then is part A and B. The support is provided to all governance models, I'm assuming, so if you are a priority school and you are a charter or EAA or, or a traditional district, same support is provided for all. I know that we'll hear more on support in a later presentation, but yes?
Short answer is yes. The EAA is a little different because of different interactions, but, but charters, yes. And any, anybody else, yes.
Part B is, maybe this is, this builds on Cassandra's point, percentage, I'd really be interested in the percentage, we should track for ourselves, our own, for our own management here, the percentage of schools that escape priority status, and how long it typically takes that, you know, how long it takes each of them to do that, or what the average time is for that to happen.
Well, no one has officially left priority status yet, in the sense that you're identified, and that you're identification year, and then you have three years of intervention. Certainly, some of them, so the top to bottom is the identification tool, and you can move around on the top to bottom, but to avoid this kind of in-out, 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 no continuity, once you're identified, you have three years of intervention with the school reform office. We're coming to the end of the fourth year of this now. I would imagine that some of the ones that are now reward schools probably have made, you know, that they, they, they won't need to stay with us any longer, but technically, they're still able to access the supports, they're still receiving support from us. So it's a three-year intervention model.
Are they still on the priority schools list?
They're not on the list that, again, the list is the identification tool, so they're not on the list that we publish, but they're still in the intervent, they're still in the school reform office.
Sure, they get the support, but they're not on the list.
Right.
Well, I...
Just to make that distinction, because that's been confusing for people. So we could, we, we do have all those numbers of how many were on in 2010 and are off now, and how many are on, off, on, off, and we could certainly bring those, it's about, this year there was, well, I don't want to, in general, it's about, each year it's about a third off and a third on, but then, now that we've done it for four years, there are some who are off, on, off, on, and whatnot. So we can certainly, in another time, bring, bring all those, but...
Yeah, so maybe for purposes of the support conversation, it would be useful to kind of see the progression, if any, you know, of schools out of priority status over time.
Yep. Well, again, just making sure we understand they're still technically...
They're getting this, I, I mean, off of the list, I get it. That's, because they're still getting the support, I think the progression over time actually is, actually informative.
Yep.
And if I may just interrupt, that goes back to my interest in the data and the stability of these placements there.
Good discussion.
Please make your comments, Dan, your comments are always important to listen to.
Well, I know, you know, I can eat up a lot of agenda with my comments, and I know that we've got another important subject to get to. I don't know that they, okay, I'll try and be really quick with them. All right, so four comments. One was throwaway comment that you made, Joseph, not throwaway, I don't mean like in a disrespectful way, but it was a sidebar comment about the meaningfulness of graduation, high school graduation in our state, and you were making with regard to the, the fact that high school graduation is one of the criteria for, you know, with regard to this methodology. And I just, I think we have to flag that. Like, at some point, that's a, that's too important a comment to make for us not to be discussing that. I just want to flag that for a future conversation for us, like meaningful high school graduation, and what that might mean for us as a state down the road.
Okay.
Second, so I'll, I'll make both of these quick. I really appreciate the comments that both Michelle and Kath made with regard to the challenges around testing and the challenges around kind of all of the stuff that students bring with them into the school that makes it difficult to measure and evaluate a school's And at the same time, like, I still think testing matters. One, because it matters to colleges, and college degrees are just so important, a vehicle for so many people to, you know, find jobs that are stable in downturns in the economy as we saw in the last five years, so on and so forth. And like, when colleges stop using ACTs, then I will stop worrying about testing, and maybe we should, maybe that's the, maybe I need to be on a board, you know, that deals with colleges, so maybe, maybe that's the place to, to be, but while they're doing that, I think we've got to pay attention to these tests, I think they matter.
Can I, can I just respond to that real quickly, though?
Sure.
I completely agree that testing, assessment of students is important, and it's a good thing, and the, I think the issue that comes into play when you start using assessments for reasons that they weren't intended for. So you start using them to label schools, to label teachers, to, you know, that's when the concern pops up. So completely agree with you, but I think Michelle's point was a little different.
Right, no, so I was actually trying to get to, it matters, one, because of colleges, it matters, two, because it's available. That having been said, that regime does need to be fixed, right? So we need to design tests for the purpose that we're going to use them. And I'm optimistic and hopeful about smarter balance, as I think many of us are, as a part of the adoption of the Common Core standards, and hope that over, that, that we will remain vigilant about trying to improve the testing regime that we offer as a state, because it does matter, and it shouldn't matter. I think the answer here is not to do less, so to speak, but to fix the tests. I think the socioeconomic status does matter too, a great deal. I don't know if any of, any of you saw the report that the Education Commission for the states released about how it's clear that that stuff matters, the challenge isn't figuring out how to respond to it, particularly for an individual school, that there are so many different things that matter, and that's the kind of, in what happens outside of school buildings, that it's really hard to figure out what a kind of targeted response should be that will make a difference. And that, and in the absence of that, that there are things that schools can do, as I think evidenced by the fact that we do have reward schools that are dealing with very similar populations of students, but managing to figure it out. Which brings me to the last point, and maybe the most important one for me. Really gotten interested in the notion, or in the distinction between simple, complicated, and complex systems. Really quickly, a simple system is one that can be replicated simply by following protocols. So there are many of us today, here today, who don't bake, but we can, we can bake a really good cake simply by following the recipe for the cake, right? The protocol is all we need, we don't have to be expert to figure out how to replicate that system. Complicated systems, according to this analysis, are systems that require both protocols and expertise. So we can send a rocket to the moon and land it successfully on the moon over and over and over again if you have, follow the protocols, now that we've done it, right? The rules, the recipe, and you actually have rocket scientists with a lot of expertise who are following the protocols, right? Complex systems don't guarantee the same result, even when you have expertise and protocols. And education clearly is a complex system. It can be simplified to some extent, and so we can pull things out of data and out of surveys and so on and say, yes, this kind of thing does matter, right? Having collaborative teachers in a school that use data to drive decisions does matter. But how they use that data to drive decisions varies from student to student, depending upon the particular needs that the student's bringing, depending upon the data, so on and so forth. And so it's just this really complex ecosystem. And I think the reason I bring this up is that from a policy perspective, I think we have to find the right balance between prescription and a protocol, right, which suggests that we can land the rocket on the moon every time if we just do A, B, C, D, and E, right? And the flexibility to allow for the experts to do things a little differently in this case, because that's what's necessary with this student, or these students, or this school, or in this particular environment, or given these funding constraints, or whatever it is. And I, that's a hard, it's a really hard balance to find, for sure, which is why these things are complex. But I just offer it, hopefully, as something of a guide for us as we, you know, continue down this path. And, you know, last quick thought and comment, I know, I can't imagine how much time and energy you guys put into preparing for a monthly board meeting. And I just want to acknowledge the hard work of all of you in doing that. I know, just in my professional life, a report to a board, and there are many months where I think, gosh, I, like, the last thing that I want to do is prepare for a board meeting, but you guys do it, have to do it, and do it well, so thank you for that.
No, no, this is our most enjoyable. This, you know what, I would say, honestly, thank you for that, because it is a lot more than maybe you would know, so I appreciate that. I would also say that it gives us an opportunity like today to show the enormous amount of work that goes into these things. And, and this is where I think it's not an either-or. I mean, I've kind of been for at least 25 years a Marshall Plan kind of guy on the big picture, that we need resources and tactics and strategies to get at poverty and all these other issues. But I'm the head of a department here, in that role, is what can you do within all of those constraints that I don't have a say about in the big picture of things? You do more, even with our next item, you potentially do more. But I'm just saying we can do both, and what we're trying to show is, okay, even with all that stuff, what is it we can do and have been successful in, with the caveat that ultimately, you can lead them to water, they need to be able to do it for themselves, and some with remarkable progress with all the circumstances they have, and even in the... the complexity zone, that they've figured out somehow, and that's why this one-to-one with those schools would be so important to get beyond. I think it's a really good analogy, but they, they've somehow figured out these complexity issues that they could share with other, other districts.
Well, I had leadership matters, so, I mean, just, really, I'm sorry, but the governance, leadership, the four buckets you guys identified, instructional issues, and school culture, and climate, like, the leadership is critical, because that is all about responding to complexity. It's all about, you know, there's no playbook in that role, right? It's about organizing the response depending upon what the need is in that moment, and there, there can be a lot of protocols in other places around culture and climate, perhaps. I think there can be a lot of protocols around even, like, instructional issues, although there's complexity in the individual classroom, of course, in how you deal with individual students. But if the leadership is at the building level, it just, it feels to me like finding the right person, like, there's no recipe for finding the right building leader either. It just, like...
One little piece of recipe that I mentioned to the school board group last week, and I think it's, you know, I've done this a long time now, it's, one thing they better find in their superintendent is someone who doesn't have a need to be liked.
Yeah.
A deep need. Most of us have some need to be liked, but you need to have, you need to be able to try it on a daily basis, keep something above that, that you're willing to take the hits. And I, I could tell from head nodding, because what tends to happen, this is much less than 20 years ago, but it used to be, who was like, I mean, I'm stereotyping to make a point, but who was the popular coach? Okay, we'll make that coach the superintendent. You know, sometimes that was the way things were done, as opposed to who can get this job done, is willing to take the hit, and, and can do some of that. And Craig, I know you had a last...
I'll pass.
You're passing. Okay, then, we're in, for the president's remarks, we're moving on, and I think John's going to take a lead on this one.
Sorry, we do have, yes, for you. These are bullets that describe some of our interventions in our data conversation, so we'll just test this out.
Thank you, guys, very good.
Mark, I would say that there is a playbook, but like, the playbook in football, some plays, whether they, they're not infallible plays, I mean, and you've got to have folks with the right skills to execute them.
Education is harder than space travel, Dan. Did you see, I saw the movie Gravity with my daughter over the weekend, did anybody else see that?
Haven't seen it.
It's terrific, but, boy, you can get in a lot of trouble in space, too. So we're in serious trouble with education. No, I think your points, as always, are incredibly insightful and helpful, so...
I think she said in that movie, I hate space.
I hate space, I hate space. Excellent movie. We will not go past 12:30 as we have this discussion, we can always pick it back up this afternoon, but I'm John Austin, I'm going to introduce Meg in a moment, but by way of context, this item, you know, we have made as a priority coming out of our retreat as a board, that we want to help develop and promote an effective roadmap for overhauling our education, organization, and finance system to better support outcomes. We've had 20 years almost since Proposal A, we're seeing the financial stress, we're seeing all signs of important, big, needed attention to how we finance schools. With support from the Michigan State University Policy Center and other policy research groups, we're beginning, as a board, to bring forward a series of analysis to inform us and our advocacy, but also others and other public education stakeholders in Michigan. Meg Jalilibon is a graduate researcher at MSU. She's produced, and I think we have, first of a series of what we hope will be thoughtful policy research pieces. This piece is looking at the issues, trends, problems that are driving the financial situation we're in. We're, we're going to do next ones that include what can we learn from other states in terms of effective approaches to organize and finance education, all leading to, again, major directions, solutions to organize and finance education in Michigan and for the 21st century. This analysis is to inform us, the public, stakeholders. We also are, are using it as context in the discussions we're having with the bipartisan legislative group that Eileen Weiser and Cassandra and myself, with Bill Rogers and his committee, are involved with. And as you can see, Meg and others have been drawing together research from across the spectrum, really, from, of the policy and analytic folks who are out there, from up John to the Mackinac Center, to the Citizens Research Council, the universities, the parent group. And we did review and, and modify this based on good discussion in that legislative committee, but also the House Fiscal Agency staff, the House Policy staff, our own staff, had a chance to say, does this kind of analysis represent an accurate picture of the issues and trends that are driving our school finance problems? So what I think we're going to ask Meg to do today was just share the headlines of what's in this integrative analysis, and I would just say, my conclusions include that there is not one problem, but there's a complex of big problems in how we both organize education, how we fund it, and how we choose to use dollars we already have, and how we're spending them that are driving the financial situation we're in. And so I've asked Meg to sort of share the highlights from this paper, and, and for our discussion and our edification, as we look at what are the problems that are driving where we are, and then turn, with everyone's help, to what might we help do about it. So, thank you. Thank you, Meg.
Okay, so the policy brief is a summary of the major issues, finance issues in education in Michigan, and it ended up being a lengthy document, so I'm just going to share that, the headlines, and I'm going to start out, the number one issue is a decline in education funding in real terms in Michigan. And I looked at the gross appropriations for education, those have declined about 12%. The, the foundation allowance, both the basic and the state maximum, they've both declined in the neighborhood of 14 to 16%. And then the school aid fund itself has also declined. So you can see that there, the, the investment that we're making in education has been going down. I looked at the last 10 years, but, but the declines are most severe over the last, maybe five, since the recession. One thing to note about that is our, the school aid fund, we've experienced a narrowing of the tax base, so before, we had revenue from the business tax that was going into the school aid fund with the new business tax, that's no longer the case, so we have less sources of revenue in the school aid fund, and we also have an expansion in the uses of the school aid fund to higher education and also the preschool expansion. So decline in funding in real terms. The second headline is declining enrollment. We've experienced a loss in our school population of around 10% over the last 10 years. That decline comes from people leaving the state, it also comes from Michiganders having fewer children, and so we're seeing smaller cohorts under kindergarten, and so we have fewer students to educate. From the state's standpoint, if we were to hold our funding steady, and we have fewer pupils to educate, that would be an opportunity to invest more in each student. So from the state's standpoint, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but the districts, because we have Proposal A and funding follows the students, the districts, we have, I think about 70% of our school districts have experienced a decline in their enrollment, so not all districts, but most districts, and the declines are averaged between 5 and 10%. But every time they lose 5% of their students, they're also losing 5% of their revenue. So for the districts, it's, it's a financial hit when they lose students. Third headline is the pension fund in Michigan, primarily due to the recession and investment losses, there was an unfunded liability with the pension system. Now, our legislature has addressed that unfunded liability with legislation in 2012, and they have changed the pension benefits for new hires, and they made changes, they actually capped the amount that the school districts would have to contribute to the pension fund. But, but what's happened is school districts have, that amount was capped at, I think, 20%. So school districts have seen their contribution rate almost double, from an average of 12 to 15% to 24 and a half percent this year. So that's 25 cents for every dollar of payroll they need to contribute to the pension fund. So districts are contributing more, but the state, because they capped the contribution rate, the state is also making large additional contributions to the pension fund. So I, I've grouped those first three headlines, the decline in funding, decline in enrollment, and the increase in the pension fund contribution. Those three things together have caused most school districts in the state to experience a 25 to 30% decline in their revenue. And that is a substantial hit to their revenue, and I think that explains why we're seeing so much fiscal distress in the school districts in the state. So moving on, bullet number four is, we have created hundreds of new schools without a strategy and without quality control. I think last year, we created 33 new charter schools in the state. Every time we open a new school building, we don't necessarily close a school building, and so we're expanding the capacity, and we have to pay for all those additional seats in additional schools. So we've seen capacity expansion in charter schools, in cyber schools, and then also there's capacity expansion caused by schools of choice, when wealthy school districts will increase their available spots by adding onto their buildings. And so we, we just see growth in facilities and expansion in capacity that's not justified by the, the demographics and the enrollment in the state. Fifth bullet, unintended consequences from the foundation allowance system, and I just want to highlight two, the one-size-fits-all nature of the foundation allowance system. We, we have one foundation allowance, and the school districts receive the same amount of funding, whether it's first grade student, or a 12th grade student, or a special ed student. So other states sometimes have different foundation allowances for different types of students. What happens, we're sort of incentivizing our for-profit charter operators to choose students who are low cost. And so we know that charter schools enroll more elementary school students, we know they enroll fewer special education students, so we see an incentive to, to choose the low-cost students. And then the second unintended consequence is the fact that the money follows a student, which I've kind of already covered. Item six, Proposal A, property tax cap. In Proposal A, there was a, part of the law was that we would cap the property tax growth at either inflation or 5%, whichever was lower, and that creates two problems for us now. The first is, we could have two people living in identical houses next to each other paying different property tax rates, and the person who's lived in their home longer is probably going to pay less. And then the second issue is that we had declining property values due to the recession, and so because we capped the amount of growth in the property tax, as our property tax values recover from the recession, we are not recovering that income. So I, the House Fiscal Agency predicted that it would take 20 years for the state to recover from, due to the tax cap. So we had five years of declining property values, that would take 20 years for us to recover from, and that's about $500 million in less tax revenue that the school aid fund is, is collecting from the property tax portion. Number seven, no state financial support for school buildings or capital infrastructure technology. We are one of, I think, 12 states that don't offer any support to school districts for their school buildings, and because of that, we just have really large variations in the quality of the buildings across the state. Wealthy districts have very modern, very nice facilities, and poor districts have crumbling facilities. Number eight, erosion of the Proposal A at-risk funding. The, let's see, statutorily, we provide 11.5% for at-risk students. At-risk students are defined as students who receive free, free lunch in Michigan, and so the district is supposed to be able to get an additional 11.5% in their foundation allowance for those students. The problem is, we've had increasing numbers of students eligible for free lunch, and we've, the appropriation for the at-risk categorical has stayed constant at $309 million. So if you do the math, we're actually only giving districts 6% to 7% of additional support for at-risk students. Regional enhancement millage that was part of Proposal A was an idea that, at the ISD level, districts could work with their ISD to pass a millage, I think it was capped at 3%, that would provide additional revenue. That has only been used three times in the 20 years of Proposal A, and, and is a provision in Proposal A that, that maybe could be modified to be used more. Ten, the lack of consolidation, and this is Superintendent Flanagan's proposal, that we consolidate more services at the ISD level, and that there are potential savings there for the state if that were to happen. In my brief, I identified some new research that suggests, it's research specific to consolidation of services at the ISD level, and it, it suggests that particularly, in the case of business services, there's some savings to be had, and also, there's an improvement in those business services when they are consolidated at the ISD. And then the last thing on my list is K through 12 revenues lack stability, and I had written a quote, this is from Glenn Oxender, who is a retired lawmaker who was one of the authors of Proposal A, and he said, "Education funding should be safe in good times and during a recession." And currently, the school aid fund, 80% of the revenues come from three taxes, the income tax, the sales tax, and the property tax. We've already, I've already mentioned how the property tax has declined. The other two taxes are very susceptible to recession as well. So just something to think about, would there be ways to improve the revenue stream to make it less vulnerable to a recession?
So this is really, you know, the first step, and we need to keep taking steps to try to understand, first, what are the issues, what are the trends, what's driving the financial situation of the moment? So questions, reactions, questions about some of the major items?
Craig, you wanted to start, it looks like. How about we devote three months to this, because you really could. But I just want to tackle two things. You made the comment that because of the decline in state support, we are finding school districts tipping into near bankrupts, or great fiscal distress. I must tell you that, and Dan was part of this conversation...
Yeah, we can't...
Oh, okay. The comment was made that because of the decline in state support, we're finding more and more critical financial crises in various school districts, okay? Let me just tell you what various identified fiscally troubled school districts are currently getting per pupil. Brighton, 8,038. Pontiac, 12,815. Flint, 13,757. Buena Vista was getting 15,127. Highland Park, 15,795. 99, well, 98% of our school districts are handling financial problems competently. But the comment can't be discarded that you made. It's, it's, it's just not valid. If you're getting $15,000 a kit, and you're still deeply in deficit, it's a management issue. It's a management issue. It has nothing to do with how much state money they're getting. And the other, in terms of, your final comment about the reliance upon the property, the sales, the income tax, that's precisely what economists would tell you, is a balanced portfolio of taxes. And it, it allows for variations. Now, granted, the economic downturn of the last eight years, totally unprecedented, at least in terms of the length, has caused all three sources to drop, which then begs a question, what tax would you have levied in the last 10 years that would have grown? I can't name one. Ah, marijuana.
Craig, I don't know if you want to respond to Craig's, but first of all, I will, in part, I think part of what's in Meg's paper is certainly some of the fiscally distressed districts of the moment that are on the fail, or failing list. There's, there's management issues, there's issues that they didn't spend their money properly, that's, that's a factor in many. I think what, what, what Meg is highlighting is that there are a combination of, of factors that are influencing the finances... influencing the finances of many, and if not most, school districts, including ending them up in, with real declines in their dollar amount that they have to spend in their school district that come together in terms of, not just the financial real cuts, but the enrollment changes as folks vote with their feet to other charters, as folks vote with their feet out of the state. Those have real financial implications. So, if a Buena Vista or anyone is getting, you know, $15,000 a kid, but there's only, you know, 300 kids showing up, and there used to be 1,000, that's a real fiscal impact, irrespective of whether they've managed their finances well. And the pension issue, those three things working together are, all the money that we're throwing at this stuff is paying for the pension system. Those two, three things, as Meg noted at the beginning, work together, mean many districts, is it most districts, have this kind of serious, significant financial diminished resources. Even if it looks like they're getting 14,000 a kid, yes, they still are. But the overall set of dynamics in terms of what population they're serving and with what resources is what we should be looking at.
I think Eileen was next, and then, Richard.
So, May, we've already talked, John presented this report in August with Meg at this work group that Cassandra, John, and I are participating in with the House, it's an informal work group, trying to come to a common vocabulary on the issues facing education today, to see whether there is a way to come up with some consensus on ways that if the crisis gets bad enough, we would be able to move forward with education funding in a different format. And the work group was not comfortable with this paper back in August. I missed the Thursday meeting, as we knew I would, so I don't, I'm not quite sure what the discussions were coming out of that. But we're the State Board of Ed, and that's the work group. Where I'm grateful, because you guys did this and I didn't have to do it, and nobody can ever be critical of me because I didn't put anything on paper. So, I've been, just as Craig went too, you know, this is a heroic effort. But I have problems with this because, Meg, I don't know if you were here earlier for the discussions on the priority schools or the first, the first two agenda items?
I heard some of it.
A little bit of it. And you can tell that this board is deeply involved in how to move students along in achievement. And the entire discussion here centers on funding without any board overview, there's a little, there's background, which you were good to write, but there's a board background and a State Board of Ed, or sorry, an MDE background on this, which is involved in intrinsically trying to take student achievement and raise it. We are passionate about making sure that the adults in the system have what they need. But as Craig was just saying, money going out is not equaling resources or student achievement going back. And that's not reflected in this statement. I go back to the Chrysler and the GM bankruptcies. I think that at this point, there's enough transparency on K-12 public education that most consumers would understand whether their district is doing a good job or a poor job in student outcome. Now, they may not say that that's the only measurement of student success, but they're there. You know, like, there's a, I have a bridge article here, and there's been a lot of education from both of the political parties, from every civic leader I can think of, every business leader, to try and bring this discussion to a better spot. When you look at the Chrysler and GM bankruptcies, there was a governmental and public understanding that the problems were overwhelming and the companies couldn't survive as they were. And in some ways, you're sounding that alarm bell in this paper, but you're not doing the parallels to education, which is that student achievement is slow. We have financial issues, we have people moving out of the state, we have huge issues with choice, which actually has more movement than charter schools at this point for student, for student changes. But people moving out of the state, there's a lot going on. The bankruptcies resulted in significant management philosophy changes at both companies. They restructured worker compensation throughout the hierarchy, including white-collar Delphi employees losing their retirement benefits, and a two-tier worker compensation system now on the line, which none of these things are things that we wanted or that we thought should happen, but they were dictated by the way that the world works and the way that those companies were functioning. What the federal government didn't do was restructuring to do price supports for car sales at a certain level. They said, "No, the companies can't survive. We can't fund enough people to buy cars at $5,000 a car," to attempt to make them viable for the future that way. It didn't have isolationist policies requiring consumers to buy America or go to a traditional public school, rather than moving, taking a choice in going to your neighboring district or going to a charter school or some other cyber school, whatever it is. It required the businesses to restructure, and then, it allowed open market competition, these bankruptcies did. We don't want schools to go into bankruptcy, but we see the same kind of market changes, and that's why charter schools and cyber schools were created. What we're seeing is districts who are not able, just as we discussed this morning with priority schools, we are seeing districts who are unable to see what else can be done. And we're seeing kids change districts, we're seeing them change schools, we're seeing kids, people are moving out of the state. That's huge, and we have to figure out a way to address that. But how can we, with no bankruptcy mechanism, try to throw enough money at schools, enough tax money, enough new tax dollars, or enough restructuring dollars, to give people what they want for products that may not result in student achievement? And that's the part of this discussion that I think the board has to add. I don't see a way, with everything that we do, with the kinds of intense noodling that we're doing with research that the department is coming up with, with discussions on things that are succeeding, unless we convey that as part of this, that that is a huge piece of the picture, that's why charters exist. It wasn't some government policy to destroy public schools. They're there for a specific reason. And when I look at, I'll stop after this, but when I look at the Ann Arbor Public Schools, which lost 210 students this year, I think, I don't have the student count data from the second. But in September, they anticipated that they were going to have 200 fewer kids than they had, that they needed for the budgeting. That's almost a $2 million loss. Last year, an $8 million loss resulted in them laying off, or retiring 56 people with 43 full-time employees left. That's significant. They're about to face another one with 10, or 12, or 15 people, if those numbers hold. Of the kids who left, an interesting thing happened, 144 kids out of the 210 who left, we had 144 applications for schools of choice. They accepted 116 students, so that's more than half of the number who, of, actually, the number of kids who left, 71 moved out of state, 43 moved out of the district, only 13 went to private schools, 13 went to charter schools. One's being homeschooled and one is unknown. So, I am very anxious that as we look at the data, I know that John is saying it was run through the House Fiscal Agency staff, you know, Craig's coming up with other numbers. I want this report to reflect data that's accurate, and I want it to be a really good comprehensive view, not just of the things that you are seeing in your research, but the things that we're seeing and the department is seeing of what things work and what don't, things don't work. And the vision that I think we have to have, we have to, we, is that we need to include 20% solutions. And part of that can be why choice exists, the fundraising challenges for schools, declining enrollment, all the things that you've listed. But it also has to include ideas and strategies that lead the conversation back to student achievement, and less on strategies we see that don't work. And the educational strategies that you've outlined, that you haven't outlined, are the things in part that are driving the facts that you've included in the paper. And the last comment that I'd like to make is that one of the things that we brought up in the work group was the tone of the paper. Because as somebody who's researching education, you know, we're living it, we're seeing the people involved, we're seeing the teachers and the schools and the children, a little bit more than most people have a chance to. And I know that you and I had talked briefly about defined contributions versus defined benefits. If this paper advocates, all charter schools do contribute to MIPSers unless they have a for-profit manager. If they're nonprofit, they contribute, okay? So, that data is not correct. The, but the other problem is that if you advocate that somehow by funding the system, MIPSers, with charter school funding that will fix it, it can't. It can't even begin to. And things like, if you are talking about paying charter schools a prorated basis for elementary school versus middle and high school, you have to understand that 43% of charter schools have high schools. So, I mean, it's just not, it's not pat. And more important, if you do that breakdown for middle, elementary, middle, and high schools, that's also what will happen for traditional public schools. So, it just has to be part and parcel.
Eileen, I got to respond in part, just that we did.
Sure. I only have one more comment.
Encourage Meg.
Yes.
And we want to get the facts of the case right.
Right.
We're not talking about solutions yet, we're talking about what are the problems, issues, trends. We did, and Meg made significant changes based on your input, our staff's input, House Fiscal, and others, to get both tone and facts of the case right. And at the last meeting last week that you weren't at, we asked the question, House Fiscal, Jason, the House Policy Staff, have we named, and we got accurate, the major facts of what's contributing to the financial situation? Put aside whether charters are great, charters are a problem, charters and choice have significant impacts on what we're seeing in terms of school finance. And so, we need to just try to get the facts right, that's why we're still here, and what we need to get it out into the public air, too.
But there's a tone difference. And when you dismiss the Credo study, when you dismiss the Credo study facts of two and three months' growth for students as irrelevant.
Those are in the paper.
Oh, I'm aware that they are, but then, the last closing, you know, instead of saying, "These are significant," instead, you quote pros from Education Trust as dismissing the quality of charter schools. And I'm just saying, it's inflammatory. It may reflect the majority of the board members' views on how public education should be and is and will be in the future. But it doesn't reflect mine, and I think that it's inflammatory for the people you want to enlist to try to get the changes.
The majority are seeing this for the first time, too, and I'm sure have some questions about it.
And I defer to.
Let me move this along, and I think this is a start, right? This wasn't intended, like, we're not acting on this today, or is that correct?
Are we?
Yeah, so this is just, so we have a chance.
We're beginning a dialogue to try to understand what's driving the situation.
Oh, no, no. It's the beginning.
Let's, in that spirit, I think Richard has his hand up next, and then, so did Cassandra after that, so, and then Kathleen.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, I was able to read this online prior to the meeting, and your summary of points, I think, is very helpful here. I think what this adds up to is that in changing times, our traditional model of bureaucratic-dominated school districts are unable to change to meet changing demographic trends. And there are some deep implications for this. It's clear that despite the profit margins and the lower funding, that charter schools are able to respond to market. I take exception to your verbal comment that these schools are without quality controls. I would argue just the converse. They're, they experience a much higher level of response to market and disappearance unless they meet certain standards, whereas, traditional public schools get more money. And what we subsidize, we tend to get more of. And our philosophy heretofore has been to subsidize failure. Furthermore, there's a certain lack of coherence, as, for instance, you state that there are unintended consequences, all students get the same money, and then, in a later point, you say, but at risk, students are supposed to get 11.5%, they've only been getting 6% to 7%. So, these two assertions are not entirely consistent. So, I think we do need to kind of digest the facts and what they imply further. Thank you.
Our Spring Arbor students, one thing you'll see is this, just so you know, I mean, part of the system is that these are folks at the board table that run as Republicans and Democrats, and unlike Washington and Lansing, we're having a dialogue about it. This is all good. No, seriously, this is, this is America, this is democracy, and it's good. And it's, we wish they would imitate this at the federal level, and we probably wouldn't be in the spot where.
Which is interesting, we've met with the work group, with the legislative work group, with the, some of the alumni of the original Gang of 14 that did Proposal A. One of the things they pointed out, which I didn't fully appreciate, they purposefully, when they did that, were trying to cut down on categoricals, and all these different categoricals, and package them into one grant that could be flexibly, you know, used by school districts. And, but they wanted to maintain a few categoricals, and one was, poor kids need more help, so that they, the at-risk sort of categorical remained as a separate categorical purposefully. What they were pointing out was, the flexibility, the foundation grant, sort of one-size amount of money, has some unintended consequences that I think are described, for good or for ill. You know, it basically allows, you know, more costly education to not get as much resource as less costly, et cetera. But they were noting that we've basically diminished the financial support for that remaining categorical that they wanted to keep very purposefully, the at-risk funding. And that's, that's just a real fact, that, that let's give the poor kids some more money has now, we haven't sort of lived up to that expectation that they had at that time.
Well, I noticed that when talking about overall funding, you speak in categorical terms, but in terms of the student allowance here, then you revert to percentage terms, and that just seems maybe a little.
Can I just, I mean, you guys may all know this anyway, but one of my problems with looking at the funding is that every school district gets a different amount, right? And so, the foundation allowance is a base, and then, there's at-risk funding, and there's special education funding, and there's different pieces that are added to that base. But when I'm trying to just, a lot of school districts have said that they're not, that they're not getting enough funding. And so, to try to look at it, just sort of look at the overall picture, then I just chose to look at, you know, the gross appropriations, the School Aid Fund, and the two levels of the foundation allowance. Now, I understand that different districts get different amounts, but I do feel that funding should at least keep up with inflation, and it hasn't. So, I would, I don't know if that clarified.
Cassandra, please. And then Kathleen, and Dan.
First of all, I know how much work you put into this, and I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I think it's really important for us to have a base understanding or knowledge of what the issues might be, and we can discuss the politics and the policy that go with it. But if we don't have kind of that base understanding of what's happening, it's really hard for us to move forward and kind of address a lot of this. And I think Eileen is right in the fact that, you know, this board really looks at student achievement, and we need to keep that focus, and it is very important. But I do also think that student achievement is something that will continue to struggle as long as we have an unstable education foundation, if you will. And I think that's where we are. And I think it's, you know, regardless of what opinions might be on charter schools or cyber schools or traditional schools, or, you know, failing or not failing, whatever that might be, I think there is a reality here, and that is that, as of now, we have a funding structure and a school structure that just don't work together. They may have 20 years ago, but things have changed. And I think we can all acknowledge that that's the truth. And so, I think that, you know, if we want to focus on things like student achievement, we also have to be mindful of what's happening with the funding levels in the state. And, you know, I just think, if you really, if you take a look at it, you know, I looked at SEPI data not too long ago, and in the last 10 years, or in a 10-year span, we lost 183,000 students. We were educating 183,000 less students. And there's a number of reasons for that. The birth rate, people are leaving, that have left the state, you know, all of these are contributing factors to that. But at the, in the same 10-year span, we net-growth 110 new schools. And that is not sustainable. So, I think if we could just start from that kind of platform where we can all agree that there are certain issues, let's take the policy out of it, but there are certain financial issues that are going to contribute to an unstable educational platform. And ultimately, policy decisions will affect finances, but finances affect policy decisions. So, the two kind of go hand in hand. So, I just want to, I just want to commend you for putting this together. I know it's a working document, I know it's, you know, I know that there's going to be varying opinions on it, but I think a base minimum, we need to at least find some place that we can start from where we can all agree, this is kind of like the minimum of where we are, and then, we can talk about where we need to go from here.
Thank you. Kathleen, and then Dan.
Well, I agree with what Cassandra just said. I want to thank you, I want to thank John for how he got you, but it was.
Good officers of Michigan State University to help us all.
Yeah, I thought that was very helpful. And I think you laid out the major issues in the funding, and I think you did it very clearly. So, I appreciated it very much. I think. think we had originally talked about that. One of the things we want to do is, we want to see, what does it cost to educate a child in Michigan? That was one of the issues. We want to make sure we give every, we want to, we would like to have quality education for every child in the state. And that's our, that's our basic goal that everybody should achieve. But how do we, we need the resources to get there. And this is, this tells us what the issues are and what we have to deal with. And I agree that we, you know, that's what we wanted. The goal is quality education for the children in Michigan. But this system that we have now is not functioning the way it was intended or hoped to function, but it was created. And you pointed out some of the problems. One of them is the creation of so many new schools. As the same time we're closing, some public schools, we're creating other public schools, or so-called public schools. I have my doubts if cyber schools run by more profit companies are really public schools. And if we talk about results, all the results I've seen, they're not producing achievement levels that are as good as a regular public school. So that's another discussion. But I want to commend you on doing this. I want to commend John for getting it done. And I wondered, what was the reaction when you just presented this to the work group, to your colleagues on the legislative side? Did they, how did they react to this presentation?
We had good spirited discussion, but there, as I said, there was also, I think, acknowledgement that we're trying and are getting close to having facts of the case laid out in a way that we can sort of use it, as Cassandra suggested, as a platform of understanding what's driving the financial situation, irrespective of, you'll always get disagreements, too, and I think Meg tried to note those. You get estimates of, real funding has increased, and real funding has gone down 12%. So finding at least some agreed upon middle ground for what are the dynamics. Not the dynamics, not the problems. We talked about this. Let's not talk about problems yet. Let's just talk about the facts of the dynamics. Now, that was a private meeting, so there was actually less opportunity to posture or speak, give political speeches. So it was actually an honest discussion about what's going on here, what's driving this, are these trends right, which are the biggest things here. So, and that's, as you know, as Mike said, we don't mind having these discussions in public, but that's the kind of public discussion we need to help facilitate. What are the facts of the case that's driving our financial situation? How does it contribute ultimately to quality educational outcomes? And then what might we do about it to improve it and fix it?
Thank you. Dan, and then Michelle.
So I did not have a chance to read this before the meeting, so I should preface my comments with that apology and explanation for anything that I might say in error. Two is, want to thank both of you, John, for getting this process started. I think that we've talked for probably a solid year about needing to begin to investigate this issue, the financing of public education. Your able leadership has gotten us to the point where we're actually having a substance conversation about it, so thank you for that. And Meg, thank you for all of your hard work in putting this together. It obviously took a substantial amount of time and energy, so thank you for this contribution to the effort. I don't, so I think, just after a quick read of this, I might offer two things. One is, I think the effort here is good, not perfect, but good, in trying to, let me back up. So we should be doing what Cassandra said, which is starting from a kind of place of, here are the facts, here's where we are. In that regard, I think this effort is good, not great. There are some things that are missing. There are some things that frankly need to be fact-checked and so on. That's fine. Like, that's the nature of the beast with this stuff, and everybody can take a deep breath, like, well, so now we begin that work. Just for purposes of the record, one thing that I would mention that I think is important is the fact that there's not, there's not much, there's really not any discussion, I didn't notice, anyway, of facility financing for charter schools, and of the absence of the ability to bond and so on, which-
And for public schools.
Pardon me?
There's no funding for public school facilities.
Fair, then we should put that in, too. That's fine. So, but there's no, there's not a discussion of charter school facility financing, is my point. And I think that that is something that needs to be included. Frankly, I probably started this in the wrong place, but it's all right. I'll get to where I want to get to. So I think that's a big hole that needs to be filled. The fact that charters have to spend operating money in order to acquire a building, based on the way the current state law is structured, which obviously disadvantages them, although that's not the issue. The issue is that it disadvantages students, I think, to the extent that we could provide that funding or another mechanism for them to get buildings. So there are things like that. There's just some holes that I think need to be filled in this. I would also suggest that what we should do is go back through the document with an eye toward not proposing solutions, or not even leaning toward. So part of what's happening here is that everybody brings their own filter, to the point that Mike made, superintendent made earlier, right? We have our own lens that we bring to this stuff, and we read it through the lens. I think it's a fair attempt to state the facts. The problem is that each one of us reads it through our lens of what the solution should be, and sees our solution being, kind of, something being said that positions our solution as less than desirable. And that's where the challenges come in. To the extent that we can go back through this and just note where all of that happens, perhaps there's a way to rephrase all those things, so that the solution is, so that we're not, we're not discussing solutions at all. We're not even setting up solutions, you know, critiquing solutions here at all. We're just trying to create the common base. Last thing is, I do think it's worthwhile to say at the outset, what Cassandra said, which is that this issue is important because and to the extent that it impacts student achievement and learning. I just think that's the right place to start this conversation every time, and I think we need to be explicit about that as the right place to start this conversation. Otherwise, I think it's great. Really happy that we're into this conversation, so thanks.
Thank you, Dan, and then Michelle.
Hi. I just had some questions. But this was, this was very, this was great. It really helped me, and as a fairly new board member, to sort of understand these issues around funding, because you do hear, oh, no, funding's gone up, funding's gone down. There's a couple of things I wanted to ask about. I had some questions around the property taxes with Proposal A. Now, that's commercial and residential property taxes that are collected, or is it just residential? Do you know?
Let's see. There's property taxes that go to the state, and there's property taxes that go to the district, and I think they're different.
Okay. So the money, but then the money comes through the entitlement-
6% goes to the state.
-to the foundation. The state collects the money, and then it goes through the foundation per pupil?
The state collects the money in the school aid fund.
It goes into the school aid fund.
And then they, you know, as part of the budget, it becomes part of the foundation allowance.
Okay, so that's how it, so just, it's just a little bit, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand the process. Okay. So I'm just wondering if sort of the, also the, I know we're getting more manufacturing, but the loss of manufacturing, steel plants, things like that, that would also affect the tax base, not just the property, home property taxes as well? Just curious.
I would have to check. I'm trying to remember. I'm thinking one that-
Commercial property, doesn't that go to something else, right? Someone here knows the answer to that, whether it's all residential-
Well, I thought industrial, commercial property was taxed at 18 mils locally and dedicated to the local district. I see heads nodding, so maybe I'm close.
Okay, that's how it is. So a community that may have had a loss of some industry might be also more severely hit?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
What happens is that it's a credit.
It's a credit?
So if you have a big factory, the state sends you less money, but the amount's the same.
And that's-
Less, but it's the same?
Yeah.
And if you have a factory that pays $100 into the pile, when it comes time to distribute the state aid, they deduct that $100 when they send the check to that district.
Thank you, Board Member Love.
So you get less.
No, you get the same amount. Everybody gets the same amount, the $7,000.
Well, not, there's still some exceptions, because some got locked in.
Yeah, yes.
I'm trying to answer part of this. Some of this got locked in in 90, January 1 of 94. So if you happen to be a district that locked in high commercial value, you're kind of still sitting up there. I think there's 38 or 40 of those, and there's less of that now, right?
The whole, the whole harmless-
The whole harmless has been, but there's still built in some of that. But otherwise, it is kind of a deduct.
Oh, I see. So if you're higher than-
So if you happen to have had the good fortune of being a district, Farming Hills went from a poor district to a rich district overnight, because suddenly 696 and 275 blossomed. You go down the road a little bit, and after 94, Plymouth, Canton was after 94, so when everything blossomed around 275 and 14, they didn't directly benefit from that. That more, in fairness, that kind of went to the state indirectly. In general, the new commercial stuff, in general, goes to the state.
So what I hear is that it's not uniform. It's pretty uneven. It's pretty-
Well, but one thing Meg Franklin, the House Fiscal, pointed out in this last go-round, the formula, the way it works, let's just say you qualify for $7,000 a foundation grant. If your local property taxes don't produce enough for your share, the state then fills in, so that you get 7,000. The state might give more than they did under the ratios, depending on how much money was raised locally. So in some sense, if the local property taxes aren't producing as much, the state funding rises, which is another reason why we may see some rise in the state money, which is just filling in less local money.
Okay, so the-
With the same amount of the foundation grant.
But the money from the commercial property to the state would be less, because they were nonexistent, because they're not there anymore. They shut down. Okay. And also, the federal government cuts in this, you know, the sequestering, and I know this affected special education and things like that, and I didn't, maybe I kind of, I read through it, but I didn't see sort of the effects of the federal government. Is that significant, or?
Well, only, I pretty much left the federal revenues out of this. The only time I talk about them is the ARRA, the stimulus money that the state then used to support the foundation allowance for several years. But, yeah, the federal, that's like another story.
Right.
You know what, we can, Michelle, in that spirit, we can help, I think, on this by, this was a great start on these issues, and you did it for the purpose you just described. We can help by trying to fill in some of the blanks on that, like what federal money is and all the rest. So we'll try to look at some of that.
I'm almost done, I'm off to. Also, the front-loading, my understanding for the pensions that went to a 403B instead of a defined benefit, you know, because I hear these figures saying, oh, no, we've never spent more per pupil, but I'm also hearing that that money that is being considered per pupil isn't really per pupil. It's the pot divided by the number of kids, right? So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like, this $15,000 per child in Buena Vista. Okay, so, but my understanding is, is that it also, it's like taking all the grant money that's coming in there for whatever purposes that may be, or even to front-load a 403B and, you know, the defined contribution plan, and then you're saying that somehow that's being used for the kids in the school. And I mean, I guess, in the future, I'd like to see maybe sort of a weeding out of that.
That might be an example of one we could give some language on, but I'm on the retirement board by position, and what this is, is the front-loading doesn't really go to the district. It's undoing some of the liability at a state level. So one of the things I've gently said to my colleagues is, yeah, I think we have a right to look for more resources. Let's give credit where it's due, too, because that's capped now.
Right.
I mean, and there is an issue that-
That they're using that money to say that that's money going towards the district, and somehow it's-
That's true. That's fair. I'm only saying that where it was until this capping was this unthinkable, that it was going to be 33% very soon. So it is, it's way too. I mean, who would have imagined you'd ever be spending as-
Well, it's because we've defunded it. I mean, by not having people contribute to it, by having people opt out of it through the-
Part of it's that.
Right. I think greatly, it's that, making it more expensive. Anyway, the last comment I was just going to make was, something that comes to mind, Kathy and I went to the Chelsea Public Schools, which was wonderful, and they knew Eileen, and I said, I think your family went there to Chelsea?
No, but we're involved in the town.
On the town, okay. And one of the things, when I said, well, what makes your school such a strong school? And they also complained about lack of money, you know, and having-
They had to make cuts.
And it, yeah, mostly in social programs, and mostly in, like, counseling, things like that, which leads to increased class sizes, which affects performance. But they said, one of the benefits that they have is that they are not around any, very many private schools or charter schools, and that that, in fact, provided them with more stability and made people in the community concentrate on improving that school district. They worked very closely with the business community, had grants and cooperative relationships with the business community, and they said it somehow protected them to really have a total community focus on their schools. And they also had some people, like Jeff Daniels' father and some other folks who had, saw ahead of time to make investments and have the businesses make investments into the schools and protect them and guard them and have a great program. But I think that that's all, that's all interlinked. And I think it gets to what Cassandra was saying, is when we put too much pressure on the system to pull away resources instead of looking at a model and improving and working on what we've got to make it the best it can be, I think we have to take that into consideration.
I could add one quick note about Chelsea. The other thing that makes it, and small towns in general, puts them in a much more advantageous situation. We can talk a lot about parental involvement, but a number of teachers in Chelsea have said to me, when I go to the grocery store, or I go over to the Purple Rose, or I go to a restaurant, I'm facing the parents with whom, for whose children I'm educating. I have no choice but to link into that, because it's part of how our community works. And when we go back to trying to figure out how to strengthen other schools in other areas, it always comes back down to, what are the parents asking of the school system, and how responsive can the school system be? We know that works, and, you know, you just had a lovely demonstration of how well it works.
Yeah, it's a great school.
Because there aren't any charter schools in Chelsea. There don't need to be.
John, I didn't do a good job on 12:30, but-
Neither did I, but you can tell the interest and importance of this. So what I would propose is, let's end for now.
Okay.
And we do need to spend months on this, Craig, to your point, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to keep improving and try to get as much collective understanding of the facts of the case and not jump to solutions. We'll never get perfect agreement on the facts, but we will get even closer. But then we are going to turn to look at, how are other states that are succeeding in educating kids well organizing and financing their schools in very different ways, from Massachusetts to Florida to everywhere else? Try to take the facts of the case and ideas from other states and come together over time and say, okay, what are the implications of this for what we need to do as a state to organize ourselves and finance education to get the outcomes we want, and continue that process, which is so important.
Or you don't think I'm going to give you the first and the last word, do you?
Yes.
All right.
I'm just mindful of the old political maxim, in politics, all facts are negotiable.
Okay, we'll try not to do that.
It'll be fun to negotiate them.
Meg, in the center, thanks so much. This is an excellent start, and I do, I do want to say again for the students, this is real. This is, John said it, I mean, they're not using soundbites here. They're thinking this through together and trying to get a better system for you and eventually your next generation. So appreciate the work of the board. It was a great start today. One you want to pick for getting back? What would be your?
120, because we got folks coming in in 12.
120, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all.
I need, I mean, he's emailing me for this whole time. He's watching, and he's like, you know.
Eileen, do you need a hand?
Yes.
Oh, my God! Do you need my reach?
No, no, I got it. I'm just choosing lime green, orange, purple.
I know. What's with the color scheme?
I'm not a purple kind of girl.
Maybe this-
It's orange or lime green.
You can spin it around, you can get the one that matches.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do. I need, I need that orange. Oh, you're going to just do that? No, no, that's okay.
When the scorecard-